Over to Maria.
Thank you. So just kicking off, usually we start off our budget workshop with just a very quick recap of some of our revenue and budgeting assumptions. I did cover most of this a few weeks ago during my presentation, so I will try to move through these slides relatively quickly for you. Just to recap, our -- oh, actually, do you want me to do it from the end, Melissa, so I can advance? Yep. Oh, no, I can just have that. Yeah. So again, really good news to report. The grand list growth is looking very strong. Right now, we're estimating about 3.72%. That's approximately $3.5 million in new revenue. Some of the major trends we saw in real estate were the ongoing construction of some of the apartments, the McLean expansion, again, that statewide phenomenon we discussed with the motor vehicle assessments going up substantially, and having some personal property increases. A lot of that was attributable to upgrades that the utility company had done. So for the workshop, we went ahead and looked back at the grand list growth over a 20-year period and just updated that analysis that we completed last year. And what we're seeing is that outside of revaluation years over the last 20 years, median grand list growth has been just about 0.8%. If we're looking at the average, it's about 1%. What I think is very remarkable is if you look at our last three years, new growth has exceeded 2%. There was only one other time in the last 20 years, outside of a revaluation year, that new growth actually exceeded 2%. So to have three consecutive years of that type of strong grand list growth is, again, I think, very remarkable. And then this is just a chart. I think this is a nice visual, again, to sort of illustrate that grand list growth. Those years that you see sort of those major spikes, those are revaluation years. The green line is reflecting the average grand list growth. And again, you can see those three most recent strong years of growth that we've just talked about. We did use the tax collection rate of 98.5%. We are finding that our tax collection revenues are continuing to remain strong despite the ongoing pandemic. We do typically receive about 99.5% to 99.6% in our actual tax collection rate, with that difference typically being revenues at year-end that would go into fund balance. And then we're also continuing to see a number of our local revenues remaining strong, which again is a bit of a pandemic effect, particularly in the area of conveyance tax and land recording fees. We're seeing a lot of people refinancing, a lot of people purchasing homes. We're also seeing a lot of homeowners investing in their homes, which is -- so we're seeing a lot of building permits, in particular for single-family homes. And again, just recapping the governor's proposed budget at this point in time, there is a proposal to cap the motor vehicle mill rate at 29 mills. He also proposed that there would be a town reimbursement, just over $2 million, not including the reimbursement to the fire district. Our initial estimate for the upcoming year of this proposal was to move forward, as we would lose about just over $200,000 in revenue. We typically do utilize the governor's budget numbers when we are making our budget assumptions, so that anticipated revenue loss was built into the budget. And for ECS revenues, we are actually expecting an increase just under half a million dollars, so some very favorable news there as well. Just a snapshot of our revenues. Any question on revenues before we jump in to the next topic? All right, thank you.
Sure, okay.
My mom assured me on Facebook today where we made holes. Yeah, that's what it says on Facebook. I don't understand. Where was the $200,000?
It's being investigated if I made a mistake.
Okay.
Hello, everyone, and I'm Trish Monroe. And I'm pleased to present our budget this evening. So hopefully, this will be a good way to kick off the budget, budgets for the different departments. It's a pretty straightforward one, so. All right, so I need to speak. So our proposed operating budget is $250,044, which signifies a 2.58% increase or $6,296. We do have three budgeted full-time employees. We are happy to announce that we have gotten our third person onboard after four long months of just the two of us. So we are fully staffed and running smoothly, so I'm very happy about that. So areas of focus. Again, this year, we will be applying for the Connecticut State Library Historic Documents Preservation Grant. This grant, as you probably know, is something that we can use towards preservation and conservation of the town's permanent records. Because we are a mid-sized town, we're eligible for the $7,500 for the grant. And I expect to be preparing that application in the next couple of weeks and have it submitted to you for your review. This year, we're trying to focus on keeping the intent of the use of the grant money somewhat simple. We've had some bigger projects in the past. As you know, the vault has been renovated. We've had an online index book of deeds that was prepared for last year. So these were high-funded projects and very involved. We do need a lot of archival-type storage and binders. We've had such an increase in land records that we go through our binders really quickly, and they're quite expensive. So this grant money will really help us as we add to our storage in the vault and prepare for the additional land records. Speaking of the vault, we are, as you know, it has been recently redone. It is really nice, well-lit, lots of space for title searchers and others to be doing their searches in there. One of the projects I know that was on last year's area focus that hasn't quite gotten started yet is to organize a lot of the records that we have in the vault. I think we do have them shelved, but we want to put them in a kind of order where the public and our office, of course, can find things very easily. So we're going to create an inventory so that it's very easy to find things and where they're located in the vault. And that should help sort of cut down the time we're running in, looking for things, and spending a little more time than we'd like to to find what we need. So that's one of our projects. And finally, we are going to continue to use the state electronic death registry system. This is similar to the birth registry system, where records are consolidated on the state registry. For birth, it has been wonderful because we can easily access the record and print out and certify a copy for people seeking their birth records. We hope to have -- this is sort of in the early stages, but we are working towards being able to do that with the death registry. We are still waiting for other funeral homes and nursing homes to get onboard with this, so there are still some paper copies, but we are -- when we get them, we are submitting them to the registry, and we look forward to that becoming a more efficient registry system in the coming months. So last two items on the areas of focus are, since we have had a new hire in the last couple of months, we thought it would be a great opportunity for us to create a training and procedure manual for the town clerk's department. One of the things that's so vital to our department is to have cross-training so that we are all able to do all aspects of the job, and there are many of those. So we have -- our new hire has graciously offered to use her notes to start that process, which we will keep up to date, we'll review, we'll make changes as necessary, but it's actually already started to be a great reference for us, and we'll continue doing that as well. And then finally, one of the things that I was really hoping to do when I first arrived is to work with the finance department to streamline the process of us preparing our monthly revenue reports. It was a rather cumbersome process with a lot of manual data input, which can always lead to errors and taking a lot of time to find the errors. So with the help of the finance department, we've already made a big change to that, which has helped tremendously in preparing the monthly reports and for accuracy and timeliness. So we'll continue on with that. And budget highlights. So we have a $3,571 increase in full-time salaries, and that is due to the anticipated general wage increase, negotiated contractual step increases. You'll also see that there's a $1,800 increase in computer software, and that is due to the increase in land record volume. Part of our requirements with the land records are not only to print the documents and keep them in the vault, but we need to keep them off-site. So we have to keep -- we have to have them microfilmed and then stored. So those costs go up as you have more documents to prepare and store, so that accounts for that. I think that concludes the town clerk's budget proposal. And tonight, I'll also be presenting the registrar of voters' budget. Unless anyone has any questions about the town clerk budget, which I'd be happy to answer, we can go forward with the registrar when you're ready.
I have a couple of questions, but I wanted to see if anybody else has questions before me.
No, I was going with the plus 6,000.
Well, just a little question. So Trish, you mentioned the $7,500 grant.
Yes.
Is it in here? Because if I look at state and federal grants across that line, it doesn't show the estimated in the budget, so I just was curious.
That is in a separate category because it's a separate fund, if I'm correct on that. It's a special Roman fund that it's in.
Okay. So these state -- are these just -- is this some grant we got in '21?
This is actually a grant that you can apply for. If we don't apply for it, we don't get it. But we are eligible because part of what we do with our recordings, there are fees that come from the recordings that go into -- they're taken out of the recording fees and go directly to the state, the historic preservation funding. So to get that back, they offer the towns to apply for grants where you can preserve your records. There's lots of different things you can do. A lot of them involve the vault because that's -- those are things where we're always looking for ways to consolidate and utilize the space that we have, because that's always a very precious thing in towns. So the grant is determined by the size of the town. We are considered a mid-size, so we get the middle-size grant, which is 7,500. The lowest one is 5,000. So we apply for that with a proposal about what we want to spend it on. That gets approved first by Boris Lekman, and then that will get sent to the state library, and they will review it and let us know if it gets approved.
Okay, I think, though, the question -- that's a good answer to that. I was just asking, like, I know it's going back a few years, but 2021, we showed a $25,000 grant, so that's just a different -- I mean, it's an old grant, I guess, for something that we got money for.
What are you looking at?
I'm looking at the town clerk revenue, state and federal grants, so it shows a $25,000 grant in actual --
Yeah, that was COVID funding.
That's what I -- okay, that's what I was thinking. Thank you. I actually had that on my note. Okay, thank you.
Trish, hi.
Hi.
Hi, Chris Peterson. We've never really formally met. I apologize.
You're welcome.
You touched upon one of the projects, this is just education. The vault, are we done with the vault project? Is that everything squared away?
Yeah, as far as the hardware for the vault, I don't see any other needs in the vault.
Door is fired, everything is --
Yes. And that's, now that we have that done, we do have a lot of old materials and things that we want to have organized and kind of review to see what needs to be preserved. So our kind of the mission this year, I think, is for us to really get in there and get organized and find out what we need in terms of archival storage and possible binder replacements for some of our, perhaps our vital records. But the land record volume is definitely creating the need for these binders and paper. We have to use certain paper to print. So that's the plan for this year, is to kind of keep it simple with more supplies rather than actual construction or changing of anything.
And I don't want to just, again, unless it's clearly obvious and I'm dismissing it, but the significant increase in the use of electronic submission for land record recording this year, but that doesn't -- we're -- are we still printing paper? Like, are we still printing the result of that submission?
Yes.
And storing a piece of paper?
Yeah.
So really not -- we're not really moving ahead as far as our data storage, in a sense.
So with electronic recordings, the recording doesn't come to us as it would at a countertop, where they hand us a piece of paper.
Sure, I get that.
We scan, we copy, we send it back to them. So the e-recording basically takes out the piece of paper that's given to us. It comes through, and we process it. We do have to print it out and make it part of our land records, and it does get stored as the other land records would, with microfilming and then the microfilm being stored. So what it does cut down on is paper traffic, if you will, and then also postage if we need to return -- we do return the documents by mail. So that cuts down that.
Yeah, so we're cutting down on the incoming paper, but we're still creating paper. We're still printing that incoming paper.
That's exactly right.
Okay. And is that, in your field, are there municipalities or institutions that are moving to an actual completely digital platform for new business, if you will, moving forward?
So we are regulated by the state as far as what we need to keep for records, and we do have to keep physical records. That's a requirement. I, you know, we keep them electronically, and with microfilm, we have the backup. That's what it's for. But we have to keep the paper records. That's -- they haven't done away with that as they have. Even with our, for example, our birth registry, we have a lot of, all the new births that have come since 2002 are available on the registry, but we still have to keep a paper copy that we keep in our vault. So it's just, it's sort of a, it does seem like an old-fashioned thing, but it is still a requirement that we keep the paper.
All right, so last question, is putting you on the hot seat. So that sort of, to me, that level of administrability is classic government requirement. From your profession, if you were standing outside, do you actually want to transition to a fully digital space, or do you actually believe that your profession needs that level of hard copy, if you will, to function properly?
Well, I guess I'm sort of old-fashioned, and my feeling is just that if there were any type of electronic issues, which we've had from time to time, we do have the backup. We could issue a certified copy. We could get a land record if someone needed it if we didn't have access to our electronic system. So I think from that perspective, and sometimes it's, you know, it's pretty critical, we're trying to issue something in a quick amount of time, or you're doing a real estate closing, you need something from, you know, you need a certified copy of your deed. If we don't have those paper copies and we can't get in, you know, we might not be able to get it, and they might -- it would create some difficulties for people.
Cross-examination is over. Thank you.
Okay, so if there are no more questions on the town clerk's budget, we can move to the registrar of voters. So I'm switching roles here. So the registrar of voters' budget, proposed budget, is $157,035, which, as you'll note, is a 47.04% increase, or $50,238. That looks like a very significant amount, and that accounts for proposed wage increases for the registrars, which will be effective January of 2023. It's my understanding that they have not had a wage adjustment in many years, and this is to put them on par with other towns that are similarly situated to Simsbury, so that their salaries are comparable. And if Maria or Melissa have anything else to add to that?
Yeah, just for some of our newer members, and it's, I believe in state statute, is that the registrars, as elected officials, the way that it's structured, they're not able to receive a compensation adjustment midterm. So if we are going to adjust our compensation, we need to do it essentially in advance of their two-year term. So this would be the budget cycle. If we are going to make an adjustment, this would be that cycle where we --
So, okay, thank you. And so for fiscal '22, '23, there will actually be three elections, the state and federal primaries, which will be this August, state and federal elections this November, and then we've already accounted for our referendum coming up, but for next spring, 2023, there'll be a budget referendum. So we, this year, for example, fiscal year, we only had two, we did not have any primaries, so we had just two elections. So that makes a difference in the budget requirements. All right, so this budget includes, as I just mentioned, the proposed wage increases for the registrars, effective January of 2023. They are running for election this coming November, so their term would then, it would be at the beginning of their new term. The next bullet is their increases in part-time account and program supplies, which will be due to the increased number of elections, as I just mentioned, going from two major elections to two in a primary. So that all requires extra funding. The next bullet point, $7,775 increase, is for equipment maintenance for additional memory card programming. So it's my understanding that for the equipment maintenance, it's part of the contract, in order to get the memory card program, you do have to secure the contract for that, and that contractual price is not anything that can be negotiated. So that's the fee for the actual contract. The next bullet point, $14,970 increase to copy and printing services for special mailings about relocation of polling locations due to the Latimer Lane renovation project coming up and the anticipated increase in ballots due to the number of elections and expected voter turnout. So as you know, the polling location for the coming elections will have to be changed. District 2, which is Latimer Lane, will have to be moved to Henry James. All of the voters in that district will have to be notified by mail, so that there's increased mailing costs for that. We are seeing numbers of electors turning up higher for all of our elections, particularly just the past municipal ones. We issued three times as many absentee ballots as we have on other municipal election years. So there's, you know, to account for that is COVID, but also just, you know, there is more increased interest in voting, it seems. So I think that concludes the slides for the registrars. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them to the best of my abilities, and perhaps Maria and Melissa can weigh in as well if you have any additional.
I have a little question.
Sure.
I know COVID is almost over. Let's knock it on that. And, you know, the no-fault, the COVID as your excuse that we've used, and I know that there was a little conversation out there that they may, they could potentially extend it to some of the elections this year.
Yep.
I don't know if that's going to happen. Would this, you know, would this accommodate that if that were to happen, like, any strain on your office?
I think that is the idea that we're preparing for it. So it's, just from having had our recent Town Clerk Association conference call, we know that there is, I think they're having a public hearing on the no-excuse absentee ballot voting versus early voting. I personally expect that probably COVID is going to continue to be a reason for people to be able to vote absentee ballot. If that's the case, we've been through it now for two major cycles. I think we're going to be prepared for it for the next, for the next coming elections. It'll be interesting to see. I think there's a lot of talk about how that's going to play out, but there could be some changes ahead, and so I think both the registrars and town clerks are going to be preparing for that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I just want to put in a plug for anybody watching, and my colleagues on the board. If you've never participated as a poll worker or part of the absentee ballot operation, it's a really neat experience, and recommend you considering it.
We'd welcome it. Thank you. Thank you for the plug. All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
It's a lot of work to go get all those names out of some territory.
IT, my favorite topic.
Oh, Rick.
Oh, Rick, I love this one.
Maybe we're the IT department here.
I should put a bullet marker on my back. Welcome, Boris Lekman. Welcome to Amber and to Heather. I don't think we've ever met. Rick Buzano, been here for a couple of years.
You helped me get in my email.
Oh, that's right. So, yeah, you'll --
Very important.
You've probably heard my name slashed somewhere along the line, but welcome.
I'm trying to get you to turn my email off, please.
In our first slide, this is pretty much our operating budget. You'll see that increase of 16.15%, and we'll have some dialogue for sure on that. Currently, the full-time employees, as it's been for the longest time, it's been really two-budgeted full-time folks. We rely, just a little add to this slide, we rely heavily on our consulting services, which is a line item that you probably see, and you'll see that's a big increase of our increase. Our areas of focus, cybersecurity is forefront. The employee awareness training program that we had, we're pretty much, we're in the third, fourth year of it. We jumped down very early, and it's a successful program for us. We have employees, you know, when we send something out as a test or a training program, they're calling us because, hey, this looks real, but -- so we have to kind of like, you know, spoon-feed them, go to their, you know, desktops, educate them right there on the spot what to look for, even though that's part of the training process. When people do get hit with something like that, they really start to get really nervous about that. So that program, I think, is working very well for us. That next bullet item is the security levels and protective measures for both internet and intranet. Obviously, we try to protect ourselves from the outside, the internet, but it's even more important that we protect ourselves internally, intranet, okay? And there are technologies that have come out in the past five years. Some of the things that we're looking at is some of those that protect us inside, that is monitoring our internal networks, not so much our outside network, okay? Multi-factor, 2FA authentication is something that we started already. We're using it on our mail systems now. This is pretty much a must-need that the insurance companies have put on us. We can't really shy away from it. Melissa and I, and Maria and Amy are kind of like, how are we going to do all this when we really don't have the money for it? So part of the increase that you see here today is from really insurance company-driven type of features that we have to start doing, and 2FA is one of them right now. Disaster recovery plan, it's always a state of flux, and it's a dynamic plan that we always keep moving forward. And then we have one main left department to move to the cloud, and this is for their email services. As you know, cybersecurity, email applications, services are probably, you know, the number one hit. So it's pretty much putting that, which is an on-prem solution, and putting it to the cloud, which is in the government space. Okay, so if you have questions on this one, we could start hitting Rick right now, so we can go forward with that. The first one's pretty easy, it's anticipated general wages that are coming through that we were having. And then that big number of 45, and contractual services, intruder detection, which is also known as IDS in the industry. This is a service, could be an appliance, could be software as a service, that really just crawls through our networks and looks for anomalies of behaviors, file opening, file closing, so on and so forth. That $20,500, that is in the addition to the law enforcement department jumping out with the town into the government space of E-mail services, archiving, backup, so on and so forth. That little note there about the BOE migrating to Gmail, that occurred probably about 18 months ago, pre-COVID. And they did the smart thing. Google offered them a lot of free services to jump on Google Docs and whatnot. Unfortunately, we were a shared company in our shared town, so we were sharing all those services with them. So when they made that, you know, great choice, is that we had, we were handed up a bowl of expenditures and who we were going to go with. And at that time, the evaluation was really Microsoft and Google and Microsoft. Our model, just so you know, is that we pushed our email services to Microsoft, but we kept the software local. And pretty much government in general is a Microsoft shop. So you'll see another in our slide is that we have increased and not increased. We have upgraded our office suite of products, so we operate with local office suite hosted email services. And that's the $6,300 for hosted email project, and then the fiber optic support, that $3,600 is a number that with our, pretty much our last phase of fiber optic rollout to Simsbury Farms, we didn't really have a contract with a fiber optic vendor who's going to support us should someone hit a pole or a tree, downed wires. We're pretty much stuck without a contract agreement with someone who'd come in within 24 hours and sustain service. So that gives us that privilege that we call them, they show up. And also on that, in contractual services, even though you don't see the detail of it, there's some buried money in there that if, you know, we don't use it for network services or network engineering, that money comes available for fiber optic repair, okay? But as a town, we don't really have one, and it's probably something you'll see next year for sure, for both the education side and the government side. It'd be a smart thing to have. The Microsoft Office 2019, we're in the second year of the migration, and that's just for the municipalities, municipal government and law enforcement, and will be done. And if you have a question on that, maybe I can stop that question. Is that -- Is that we usually ride that software out till when Microsoft says you have to upgrade. So, we anticipate that's probably going to be a five-to-six-year run. The outlook for software anywhere is probably like Microsoft and Google, they'll all get to a point where they're going to start charging for subscriptions that we're going to have to pay. So, that's anticipated, but right now, we just pay once and we ride it out, okay? Cybersecurity audit for 35, something we put in, I believe, last year that we had Amy put in. I think it's a great idea to do that. It's really easy to overlook little particular things that are going on in the network as well as outside. And that's including the firewalls, our network electronics, those are our switches and everything else that controls movement within communications within our town hall. And probably something that maybe Heather and Amber don't know is that our network is not just this one building. It goes out down Hot Metal Street, picks up Eno, the fire station, the library, goes up West Street, goes to high school, goes to Public Works, and goes to Simsbury Farms. So, that's, when I talk network, that's how big it is. Proposed service, don't throw anything yet. So, this is for a new employee that we're looking for, even though, and people say, well, why do you need a new employee? And it's, well, we've gotten a little bit bigger, and our network has gotten a bit bigger. And the way things work is that it's pretty much devices that we have. So, if we grow, then the devices we have on our network grows. And there's only two of us, so if we grew and we're growing, we just need a technology specialist to help us. What we're looking at is really this position to help us at that first layer with desktop support and server support, where Brett and myself, who is my cohort, we could really, you know, focus in on, you know, looking at firewalls, looking at network equipment, so on and so forth. We've, in another slide, you'll see our tickets are going up by 20% because we are, even though we are professionals, we're still looking at desktops and, you know, how do you, how do you create this font? How do you add this? So, we're still doing that and still, and keeping the town running with, you know, cybersecurity levels and firewall monitoring and all that stuff. So, and that's where that position would help us immensely.
Rick, is it fair to say too, the police department's been calling on you for additional needs as an expert in the field?
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the slide. It's one of the slides where law enforcement, now they've just gotten, they just did a whole technology change for their cruisers in the way they communicate, and that falls on us. That's part of our, you know, as I said, devices before, that's just another, so it's a car, that's a device. You know, that the modem that's in the car, that's a device too. So, and they're heavily into the technology piece now, especially with what they're putting into the cars. So, and that falls under us. And, you know, we've done a good job about it, and I think the chief is somewhat concerned, and we've had conversations with it. And I would think that he would stand by me for this position, and he would be, you know, he'd help me out. He's got a gun too, so.
Rick, you, you, you meant, reading back, you highlighted around about 2,500 tickets last year, you said, and you said your response time was up.
About 20, 25% increase.
Increase in ticket, you responded in 24 hours, you said that was the, so where do you, so where do you put that upon yourself as far as, you know, your own personal metrics? Is that within, are you outside, is that 24 right on 100%? Or is it, are you?
I think we're missing something there, because I'm 24 hours, so I get calls in my house all the time. When I get in on a Saturday, or if I'm home on a Saturday or a Sunday, or any night, I'm not going to put that in the ticket log, it's just going to sit there, right? Monday, if I come in, that's probably not the best thing to remember, because Monday mornings, as we all know, it's Monday morning, things go on. So, we try to get, and maybe your question is, I know, how do we prioritize where we're going to?
Well, really, how do you, so if you got, if you're, you know, if all of those were with, you said, I forget what I could read, you said all with service within 24 hours, essentially.
Right.
So, what is your, is your goal? Do you have a written goal for yourself that says all, all service calls will be answered within 24, is it 36?
In our, in our own, in all of us.
Is that your personal? Okay. All right. And is that moving out, yes, increase of 25%? So, is that moving out steadily?
Yeah, a little bit. Because there's things that happen that we can't, we can't really resolve them, so they got covered up. You know, I'm working on a project right now down in the PD. They probably can't hear me when I move, so that the change took really three days out to really get it done. You know, today I spent four hours on it.
So, is it safe to say that next year, you know, without the add to staff, I mean, this is just completely, you know, but, but the trend is that next year, you'll be saying, we answered, we had an increase of whatever, and our response, all were resolved within 36 hours? And, I mean, that's the direction we're going in, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I, and I, but I'm still thinking that. I mean, that SLA, that service level agreement that I'm, that we have in our heads, that's self-driven, so we know that, hey, you know, we got to get this thing out of the way, don't let it sit.
Yeah, I understand. Obviously, Chris, you're forced ranking then based upon the immediacy and the urgency of the need, I get it.
Exactly.
Okay. My password reset is 24 hours, chief bolters is 24 minutes.
Right.
Right, I get it.
Just to build on that, I mean, is it also fair to say that, I mean, as IT, the information and security space has always had a strategic need, but do you feel like it's gotten out of balance where you're not able to provide as much of the strategic time working with the chief, working with the finance department, working with?
Oh, yeah. I mean, we get more reactive on stuff that happens every time. So, if I'm in a conversation with the chief, my, my phone goes off, and it's something that needs a priority one, I got to go, chief, we got to go, right? Whether it's the library, or the Eno, or water pollution control.
Yeah, so basically, how many people do you support? Like you, the two of you, how many do you support?
How many employees do we have?
I mean, it's a.
I mean, it's him and Board of Med, so probably over 500.
Yeah, and spread out, we have a note there, it really is approximately 10 separate work sites, and, you know, Rick was mentioning some of them, it's all, you know, all throughout town. And, you know, one of our goals, if this is approved, is just really helping to also build some resiliency and depth, because we have so much critical IT infrastructure, and some of our needs are 24/7 operations. For example, you know, the PD and the dispatchers, that's a 24/7 operation. If something goes wrong at 2:00 AM on a Saturday night, you know, we only have two people in the department, it's Rick, it's Brett. If somebody's on vacation, if somebody then has a bereavement, we just don't have a lot of depth there. Again, you know, if something goes wrong during poll season at the farms, at, you know, 1:00 on a Saturday, that needs a response. And so, while some of our, you know, offices do have sort of a more traditional Monday to Friday, I schedule their, you know, library, Simsbury Farms, the PD, we do have work sites that have non-traditional hours as well, and only having two staff members. And again, it's Rick, it's Brett, they're responding at all of those, you know, all of those calls, nights, weekends.
Can I ask another question?
Sure, yeah.
Well, I don't know if you're going to be back tomorrow, Saturday, I keep saying it's tomorrow, but it's Saturday, to when we talk about the service improvement. But I think the salary was around $70,000, right?
Yes.
And then, the rest of the amount is benefits and things like that. Is that a reasonable, as an IT person, you know, is that, because it just, that doesn't seem like the market rate, is kind of what I was asking to ask.
I think it's, I mean, that was the one we've discussed, and 70 is a good number, whether we, you know, we find somebody for 70, that's the other thing now, right? We got to try to find an ideal person to fit a team of two. And where they come in, it's almost like, you know, we don't have any education dollars, so you got to know, you know, this type of, you know, virtual environment, you got to know this type of firewall, you got to know these type of desktops, you got to know these softwares. So, that's a, that's a tight fit. So, I think that 70 works with that. In the market, I don't know what the market is out there, it's really, it's, it's tough.
Government space, it's, anybody, anybody in the IT field is hard to find right now.
Right.
Rick, with the, with the, you know, changes that we've seen in how people work since COVID, how is that reflected in the hardware that you're looking at purchasing going forward?
God, I was going to say that, like, say, that was disaster that we had. It wasn't a disaster, we recovered very well. When we went remote with COVID, it was like, oh, where are we going to get all these remote devices? Because one of our, our security guidelines is that, well, we don't allow personal devices on our network, whether it's remote or not, it's got to be town-owned, so we control it, we know what's on it, and we secure it. So, we started rolling out the laptops, and as we started going down the COVID trail, then more and more people needed to work from home. We were fortunate enough that, you know, working with the Board of Med over all these years, they were getting rid of small devices. And so, we repurposed those, and we, we met that, that need, you know? And that really goes back to some of the money that we're going to have for rollover for, you know, three years for hardware, it's really for refreshing that kind of equipment as well, because I don't think remote, remote working is going to go away. I think it's going to be with us. And that's just another dependency on expenditures for hardware and software and security support, going back to a position, you know, now you can say, hey, this is your, your responsibility. But yeah, that was, that was a chore for us, for sure.
So, to add to what Eric said, I think I asked this question last year, maybe the year before, when you're, when you're replacing equipment and you're adding new equipment, are you getting laptops, or are you still doing desktops?
So, no, so what we're doing now is that we're buying, we're buying mini, the big desktops now, or you're just going away?
Yeah.
And actually, I bring this up, and I want to come back to your question, is that, so we were hardware strapped, and like everybody else, every other town, they couldn't get equipment, they couldn't get laptops, they couldn't get desktops, and whatever. Luck of God is that we were, the town of Simsbury has Staples Advantage. So, one day, that guy called me during COVID, and, you know, I'm, you know, shooting it with him, and I go, you know, I need some desktops, and you guys don't have these 400s. And he goes, well, he goes, if you want, I got repurposed, you know, 600s mini desktops that these big corporations, prior to COVID, were just getting rid of. They were two years old, and they get repurposed. So, I said, you know what, send me as many as you got me, because I could use them all. And that's how we got over it, just by being that crafty with the hardware. So, the hardware piece is always tough, but we're just, we stay with just one little piece of hardware, and we ride it out, or one little desktop, right, Wendy? There's no, after that initial $500, we ride it till it goes, okay? If we go virtual, and we get government pricing, we don't really get a big break, we're going to get hit with that subscription price every year. And to me, that price of that subscription just, you know, it's just another operating expense, and we'll probably increase our, our bottom line, probably a five-figure number for how big we are, for just virtual software. And that's just a subscription.
So, Rick.
So, we just write out our hardware, just like we write out the software. So, that, that hardware piece that we put in, it's on spec to go five years. I think that's the number we used, right, for refresh, is five years?
So, I can get behind the, I understand, you know, I can get, I can get a nickel and dime about technology. I get it, we're going to be spending more for cyber technology, we're going to be sending more, spending more for conversion of systems into, to, to more modern technology, we're going to be doing subscription, I get all that direction then.
Yeah.
The extra body, that's, you know, that's a big deal. You know, I, 60,000 for, that doesn't, that's, that's a rounding error, but, you know, if you talk about the incremental increases, because that extra body adds into next year's 2.56 annual salary increases, it's the benefits, all that stuff. So, you know, last year, I was at the AMG, Wendy, not Wendy, Maria, you know, last year, when I asked for the personnel forecast, we need to move to that for all sort of areas, and I think you're going to adopt that. So, putting your, if you, if we handed you your spreadsheet today for your personnel forecast needs for the next five years, are we going to see another one on there, or is this going to ride it?
I feel, no, I feel, be fine.
For, and I'm not, so, you'll, this will, this will future-proof us, which is not possible.
No, I think we're, because, Chris, what we've been doing already, right, slowly, methodically, because we don't have that other body, is that we've been strategizing what technologies to use, and we've been pushing stuff to the cloud. But even if you do that, there is a dependency, a human hour that has to be spent. You're going to monitor something, you know, we had, something happened last week. Well, that event took two and a half, three hours of both of us monitoring and watching what our network was doing till it goes away, right? If we had a third, you know, then we just put one person on it, and then we could go along with data activities. But I feel confident that with three, we'll be fine. I really do.
Yeah, we're fine. No, because I mean, every, I, I don't, I don't disbelieve you whatsoever, but for the first time I participated in this, it's you, it's, it's Taberski, and it's the chief, who always says, you know, we've been working with only, we've been working with only, we've been working with only, which is an honest statement, right? Honestly, we hear that from Tom Roy, we took care of Chris in a few years ago. But I mean, I'm just curious, okay, we're going to see, you know, we're going to see, this'll, this'll future-proof you. So, you're not, next year, you won't be saying, we're only working with three, we're only working with three.
We're only with three. I won't even put, you know, three FTEs there, I'll just leave it alone. And if I do ask for another, you know what you could do?
Yeah.
Throw your water bottle at him. No, but I feel confident with that, Chris.
Yeah, and just to, I know this wasn't totally your question, but you're, you know, you're concerned about adding a body to, you know, our headcount, and we did think long and hard about whether this could be achieved through contracted services, and I think, you know, we articulated this a little bit, but, you know, what we do is so specialized in a lot of ways, especially law enforcement, and that's really, you know, specific area where they have certain requirements, and there are just certain things that we can't have, we can't have an on-call person randomly that we call as a contracted service that's going to come in and understand our network and understand the different needs. So, I mean, we've, for years now, we've talked about, well, if we were to make a request like this, what would it look like? Could we accomplish it with a part-time person? Could we accomplish it with contracted services? And this is really what we think is the best option.
Thank you, Melissa.
Any other questions?
Rick, do you want to just share the next slide with some of the examples?
Oh, there's good stuff.
Yeah, there's, I think there's some really good stuff on the next slide.
Somebody changed these.
You just made the phone bigger.
It's getting better, don't worry.
Oh, there's that, the ticket increase that we talked about, cybersecurity training that we continued on, MSISEC, which is under internet, what is it, Center for Internet Security, Homeland Security, we've been partners with them for four years now. They even provide us services for, you know, some are for pay, and some are really just for memberships, and we, and we have them in our arsenal for protection for cybersecurity. And, you know, to talk about those, it's, it's not the right, you know, place for it, but there are things that they provide us in Homeland Security that helps us every day. Multi-factor authentication, we talked about already at the email level, and also for remote access. Cloud-based email services, it's just a safer place for them right now. There's protection that we have above with Microsoft, as well as with another partner vendor that we have that protects that, and that's that whole archive, backup to cloud, spam filtering, so on and so forth, is all part of that. And then, you know, helping Amy out and the folks in the, in the finance department with Munis, that's, that's a chore in itself. But they're great, they're great, they're great people, and it's, but that's our, our bread and butter, and that's our protection, our number one protection is that finance software.
I have a question. So, when we see our hardware through, you know, I would imagine the lifespan that we say is appropriate for the town may not be appropriate for everyone, is it sold off? Or what is, what happens?
Yeah, so what we do is, anything could happen, right? So, like, next year, if we don't get the money back for refreshing our equipment, we kind of hang on to it like squirrels for a little bit. And if it's something that we could, if it's under spec of, say, like, two years out, operating system, type of hard drive, how much memory it has, and will sustain our operation, we'll hang on to it for a little bit, and we'll actually stack it up. And then, you know, maybe a year out, if it's not worth, we just recycle it. And we have to, and all that stuff has to be destroyed per DOD, Department of Defense and all that, and it just goes away at that point.
Okay.
Did I answer your question?
Okay, thank you.
Improvements, body cameras in cruiser, in cruisers, as well as, I forgot the caveat with their, they're going to go to a new wireless solution in their cruisers. But the body cams in the cruisers, it's, it's huge, it's a big drain on us. Put short, we pushed a lot, Nick and his crew down there really had a great solution, we went with it, and it's really a cloud-based solution for them in a secured space, so it helps us out a lot. The wireless is there, expanded Wi-Fi networks. Now that we've gotten bigger, we're in a position where we could start, you know, putting out, you know, Wi-Fi networks. The library's really good for that, and they've had success. Eno's another location that we have, water pollution control, and we'll probably be working with Parks and Rec, even though they have one spot right there, is to really give them Wi-Fi in a secured mode, right? Network storage and backup is always a chore. We're getting bigger with data, you think like, like the paper that, you know, Chris said, you know, for Town Clerk, do you do you get rid of it? It's like, no, they're kind of like mandated to, to have paper. Well, we're mandated to have storage, right? Um, and what's in there and it's, it's detailed in there is really to try to, a solution, to get a solution that is anti-ransomware because those guys, they look at that stuff and that gets to be a little bit crafting and there's a lot of expenditures in there and how you do it and where it's, where it's put. Um, so that's just an evolution. We just keep going with it, you know? Surveillance, I don't know how I got, you know, stuck with the whole surveillance piece, but I am the head of the surveillance cameras in town hall. So, um, but it's great, uh, but it's, it's an expense, it's an expensive venture for the town. We have some great vendors that we work with, that we stick with and they give us appropriate pricing, uh, but it's something that we, as we move forward, we're going to have to have surveillance. And you've probably seen it around already in some of our public areas.
That's why you don't miss a meeting?
That's why you don't miss a meeting.
What happened? You put in charge of surveillance?
And then that's supporting remote access and devices. Like I said, that's not going to go away. So we're always thinking, um, like Heather mentioned about the hardware, is that if we have some equipment that is being, you know, um, taken, is offboarding, we'll hang onto it so we can give it to someone for remote access. Not that they're going to have it, but if it's, if they're asked to work remotely, that we can give them a town device. Some service improvements, the engineering support, uh, the 5,000, is that a big number? Um, actually I kept it down. I vetted a couple of vendors, um, and it's all within that range, 5,000, you know, four, five, six, like that. The reason why that's there is that over the last, you know, 20 years that we've had, we've been, um, fortunate to have a gentleman who's been really moonlighting with us for, for the 20 years and he's done a great job for us and even the board of ed. Uh, but now he's got, you know, he's got a professional career, he's got a, a growing family, his availability, he's not around a lot. Um, but we're in a position now with our expanded networks that we're going to have to have, you know, a true network engineering company support us almost on a 24-hour basis. And what this is really just timing material at 5,000. It's where we have an agreement with them, we call them up and we get it, you know, 170 an hour or 200, whatever they charge. And that's that last bullet item. And that's it.
Can someone remind me where those service improvements show up?
Twenty-eight, tab 28.
Yeah, the supplemental tab?
Oh, got it.
And just, um, Chris, quickly to your point about staffing needs, the supplemental tab, um, with the service improvements, we also put other staffing needs, um, that we didn't recommend for this year, but that we do see as, as continued needs, um, with two caveats. Uh, as you know, we've recommended the police staffing study, so that would be subject to change. And in year two of the CNR plan, we've also recommended a study to look at the operations side of public works, just to see, you know, how we're, how we're doing in that area.
Well, I want to get back onto the, we can talk about that tomorrow, or Saturday.
I may not be here Saturday.
No, I'm not talking, it's not about you, it's the general staffing plan, um, for the future, like, um, Chris just brought that up. You know, what, but what are our projected needs that we're going to see? Like, we don't see any here, right? Um, but for other departments, I don't know if we, we, these are just asks here, you know, but are there needs that we can show the projections for? This is really directed to you, Maria and, and team to, to kind of flush out, um, you know, and see also to show when we have potential retire, retirements coming up in a year. Or I don't know if we always know about that or if we have open positions and things like that. And to also look, you know, to current year and to next year so that we can get an idea of where we're going, you know, to really flush out a one-page or two-page Excel spreadsheet with the full staffing plan. Because I know we have staffing plans in each section, but if everything was in one place, I don't know if that's what Chris has been driving for two years, um, just a full staff plan with projections. So.
I think we can talk about that Saturday.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I mean, from.
I don't want to keep work here.
No, I mean, Rick, from your presentation, I mean, I, again, and I know, again, we're going to talk about the service request. I mean, it, it, it makes sense to me, the story makes sense, the numbers string together. Um, I mean, I am supportive of it. I think we have to look at it in totality with the, with the budget request. And again, from what I understand now, it looks like it, um, there is space in for it. So the need I think is established and I think there, there is space for it. So to me, it makes sense. Um, I think we have to look and look at the whole picture to what you're getting at on Saturday. But again, I, I don't think we should go short on, um, the IT expertise here. And again, I, I do want to continue to make the point of, it seems important to get you out of the help desk arena.
Exactly.
More of the strategic arena, which is why I think the investment makes sense because again, you can do a great job, but that is not the municipal IT space anymore. It's not, um, helping me with my password. It's, we need to make sure that you're implementing MFA, you're staying current on what the next ransomware tag is coming from, where you're in a position to work with our vendors. And again, I, to me, it's, it's cheap to pay the 117 to get you into that space compared to what could happen if we don't prioritize this.
Yeah, well, and one of the things like we brought up, uh, the police department, they're like so heavily into it or getting into it right now is that, you know, there's opportunity for the town, you know, possibly to save money is where keep the, the technology, the analysis of, 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 um, crime data and stuff like that. Instead of sending it out, you know, they can keep it in-house, right? Um, and that would be an IT person to support them as well.
Yeah.
Um, and that's more and more, I mean, we work with them now on things and you just see it, it's, it is getting bitter, bigger, sorry.
It is. The only, the second point I'll make back to your, to your operating budget, the contractual services, and I think we, I think we asked this, so what's not in there that you feel like potentially could be? Or is that, that 45, is that everything that keeps show up at night? Or is there something that's not in there that you feel like, hey, if we put this in, it would, it would make a difference?
Yeah, and this is, so that EDS, that Intruder Detection System I talked about, there's, there's really two things you could do there. You could dive into that. Uh, but then another thing that cyber, that insurance companies want us to have is this endpoint, endpoint solution, right? Meaning that whatever's sitting on your network, that endpoint has something on it. And that software will go through analytic evaluation of what that person's doing, where they're going, so on and so forth. And if it spots that, you know, somebody's doing something, somebody gets notified and now they have automatic resources that see that 24/7, I could be sleeping and they shut it down, right? So to answer your question is, I think our next, and our next step would be to, okay, do we stay with the Intruder Detection piece or we go push it right to the endpoint and solve that?
What's the delta in cost, I mean, ballpark?
You could probably squeeze it in, um, you know, get one facet of it in now if that works, if it fits us, then, you know, we probably don't have to see it, but it's going to hit the operating expense again, right? Um, as we grow.
I think they would roughly be the same. EDR might be, I think, a little higher.
Right.
I think if the sky was the limit, we would do both.
Right.
The, like sticker shock about it is that these are annual costs.
Right.
It's like, it's.
Well, it's constant monitor, it's a monitor.
Yeah.
So there's, it's a subscription.
Yeah, exactly.
I get that.
Exactly.
But it's becoming the baseline for.
Right.
IT security with, with any, you know, municipality or company out there.
So like quickly, we had, I had a meeting with MSI SAC, who we partner up with Homeland Security and, and they have a new product that's coming out, has that endpoint solution. It has a couple of other things that they put on the network. It's monitored 24/7 and their price is like $5 a device. So you think 500 could be a big number, but it could be an accurate number. So if you do that math, what's that number, 25?
$5 a device for what?
For, say 500.
For what, for what time period does that cover?
A year.
No, that's not right. It's only 25,000.
So we can look for that maybe for Saturday or subsequent, but again, I just, I want to make sure that we're funding.
It's 25,000?
We're talking about the full solution because again.
Oh, yeah, a month, sorry.
We're selecting, I mean, we had a discussion on this, right? And, and I think there is, uh.
30 grand?
There's a, I think there's an interest in both spaces to make sure that we fund the, the cybersecurity protocols that we need to fund. Because again, I don't want to save $25,000 and get shut down for a month.
Right.
That doesn't feel right to me. Um, and again, the, the impact to taxpayers, to the police department, et cetera, is we should be, we should be as proactive in this space. But again, I mean, we're not going to pay for the fancy whiz bang, but at the same time, we should pay for, we should pay for, for what is becoming the industry standard, right?
Right. And you go to those solutions, it's still going to put, it still puts a slight burden on the administration management of it. And you have two guys, right?
Yeah.
So that third one would help getting rid of, like you said, I think as you'd said it, Sean, is that, that whole support desktop piece kind of like goes away.
Yeah.
We have, obviously we presented for funding for a cybersecurity audit, which I obviously still think we should do, but we just went through our cyber, um, insurance renewal process and that was very enlightening in terms of what things we should be doing. So I think we have takeaways from that, one of which was, you know, the EDR solution is something that was very critical and I don't want to get too much into cyber in this format.
Do we pass, like, if you do a survey, do we come out okay? Like with what we have, I assume we do.
I mean.
Would you like a cert? Yeah, well, I mean, like, you know, like I have to do some security things at work, I have to go through a questionnaire to get recertified for, for, like, for using credit cards on our account, right? We have to answer all these questions, we have this in place, we have this in place. We come out and they say, yes, you're good, here's your certificate. And do we have to do that as a municipality to show any level of, no?
No, but what's out in the industry now, but what's out in the industry now is that there are assessments that people come in and take an assessment of. Pretty much when you do a cybersecurity assessment, that's what they're doing, they're coming in, they're going to give you a hit list like, okay, by the way, insurance companies just go on that questionnaire, which is, really it's problematic for municipalities because it's really, doesn't really have a backbone that they're evaluating, you know? But I mean, our town's not the only town going through this. I guarantee you, there's 90% of the towns in the state of Connecticut worldwide that are just getting hammered by this.
Yeah.
So.
So I'm going to give a plug for the Technology Task Force too, because you know, we have some really good new people on there.
Yeah.
To, you know, as you go forward. And a new liaison who's really super good and up on technology and he's also the public safety person, so, um.
Wow.
You know, moving forward.
Good luck, Sean.
Recovery, security and all that, you've got some good resources there.
We do, we do.
Subcommittee's coming, Rick, under the report.
All right. Anything else? Questions?
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry it took so long.
No, it was good.
It's an important conversation.
Thank you.
Now for my favorite department. Um, so I'm presenting for the financial services. So for the new members under the finance umbrella, we have not only the finance department, which is basically our accounting department, we also have tax and we have assessment as well. So the accounting function is, um, all of your accounts, your journal entries, your financial oversight, your, um, financial statement prep, your accounts payable, your payroll, things of that nature. Um, the tax department, which collects obviously the taxes, and then the assessor's office, which does all the assessments of the properties. Um, total budget for the department, 1,092,899 or an increase of about 3.07%. And then on the screen there, you can see the breakdown by each department and I won't read it to you. And then down at the bottom, you have your 8.83 budgeted FTEs and that is no change from last year.
So most of that increase is in the board of finance budget?
Areas of focus, um, maintaining our AAA bond rating and adequate reserves and making sure that we have adequate practices in place in order to do so. This gives us our financial flexibility, which is something that we definitely strive for. Continuing to implement procedures to address the auditor's management comments. Um, for those of you that were not here last year, um, you'll see it actually in the coming months, our audit has been completed and they will come out to present. But just a quick high-level overview, um, there were some things that were on there last year, our capital asset reporting to be within a financial management system and then a cap, an accounting procedures manual. Both of these things will be implemented upon the completion of the Munis implementation. We did, um, complete our Munis implementation last week, actually, so that was very exciting for our department. So now we can start piecing together some of those, um, some of those additional comments that were provided as part of the audit. Another thing that they requested is that we complete a fraud risk assessment and this is just something that we just haven't been able to take on from a capacity standpoint in conjunction with the Munis transition. So since it's anticipated that Munis will be done at the end of this year, we put the fraud risk assessment in the capital plan for fiscal year '24. And then the last item that the auditors wanted us to address was positive pay. This is something that the town did not have previously and that has already been implemented, so we're good to go on that. Continuing to review policies and procedures for quality, effectiveness and efficiency. This is obviously an ongoing, um, process, I think within all departments really. Um, but right now we have a really good reset opportunity with our new, um, deputy finance director that just came on board. Combined with our Munis conversion, this gives us a lot of opportunity to make any sort of resets going forward and create some streamlines. We obviously want to maintain our tax collection rate above 99%, making sure that we're getting the revenue the town needs to operate. And then continue to value property fairly and in a timely manner and assist with our contracted vendor for the upcoming 2022, um, revaluation. We did recently go out to bid for these revow services. This is something that we'll be working, um, with the selected vendor on closely going forward, or I should say Francine will be working with him. A few budgetary highlights, um, I won't read this slide to you, but the common theme here is basically the, um, the software increases. And this is something that we're seeing townwide and actually board-wide they recently presented. So our accounting system software is going up, our quality, um, data services, we use them for software as well as printing and mailing our tax bills. And then in the assessors department, we have a camera system and an equality software system. So the maj, the majority of our increases, um, related to those, those software increases. The $17,000 in our assessor, um, full-time account, about 8,700 of that is related to general wage and negotiated contractual increases. And then the other 8,300 is related to additional funding to assist with field work backlog. So for the members that weren't here last year, we had proposed a position in the assessor's office, um, that is cost neutral. This person would be working on any, um, assessments for field work that they have not been able to catch up on. And because this is something that would generate grand lists, you're generating revenue and therefore there is no cost to the town. This is something that was approved last year, unfortunately, because it was a temporary part-time position, um, we have not had a lot of interest and those that applied have not been qualified. So, and due to the labor shortage in a specialized field, you can, if you search just other towns, assessor positions, super hard to fill right now. So we're asking for a slight bump in costs so that we can be more flexible with our options. Perhaps we can offer full-time hours, perhaps we could go out and get contracted services, um, to see if we can have a vendor come out and work through that backlog with us. Um, so that's that increase.
Amy, remind me, that was a lot of factor one payback?
Oh, I don't remember offhand.
That was a schedule in last year, so it was.
Yeah, I'd have to check last year's book.
So, so the job, so you referenced that, that there's, um, job openings, those are for full-time positions, right?
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
Correct.
Does Granby, Avon, Canton, does anybody have a, could we get together with somebody else and then do the same thing? Share 50% and hire somebody who doesn't, you know, who wants to get paid 50 grand versus 17?
We are open to all options right now. We can definitely look into it.
Have a conversation. Start, start us on the never, never-to-happen, you know, process of starting to do regionalization.
Absolutely. We're so open to it.
Yeah. When you say that you have a fieldwork backlog, can you just explain a little bit what that, what that is?
So Francine is here. I don't know if she wants to explain it. She can certainly explain it way better than me, because she's the one that discovered it. So do you want to just talk about it briefly?
Well, I go back to several years. I mean, because that office has been understaffed for several years, there's continuously stuff. I mean, we've been trying to do a lot to improve the process, too. One of the things that we have done is to implement the building department and our assessing system, our CAMA system. For the permitting system, instead of being a manual entry on our end, the assessor's information would go to the building department, you know? But it wasn't the other way. So this year, we implemented that. So that's coming in, so we don't have to have someone manually enter permits. However, I mean, it's not 100%. So we still have, you know, some fixing to do there and some, you know, structures. So that was one major reason for this.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it seems like, you know, the assessor's office is so critical, and if you have a backlog and a staffing shortage, then you really could be missing out on revenue. I mean, it could be a position in its place for itself.
Exactly.
If you are caught up and efficient in your procedures and can really be, be running. I mean, it can be short-sighted to let a staffing issue go. Not that you're doing it because you're short-sighted, it's because we're having trouble filling it, but it does seem like putting some resources there can pay itself back.
Right.
That's why we did it. I mean, previously, we did this with an outside service, right? And they collected...
So we do have somebody that comes in right now to do some of the fieldwork, but he's only doing the fieldwork, and it's not actually getting in the system to generate the growth.
Just trying to help, try to get out there.
Yeah, I mean...
The other, the other thing is, with the mandated state requirements of reporting that we have to do, and with the staffing that we have, you have your priorities first, things that have to be done, and then move on to your next priority. So with that said, I mean, it's just staffing, it's just...
I mean, in the Levens discussion, right, keep me honest here, is somebody pulls a permit for a pool, you guys do the thing, they make their pool, we sign off on it. The permit should go then to completed work to the assessor's office, the assessor's card gets updated because now there's been an improvement on that property. And what, what I'm understanding, again, it's no fault of anybody, but that pool gets permitted and built, but we're not updating their tax bill, so somebody gets a, basically, a through pool from an assessment standpoint. Then they fill that pool in, and they never paid for it. And those are actually real things that have happened. Again, it's no knock on anybody, but that's actually happened. Somebody pulls a permit and does an addition. That's what we're talking about here, is there's revenue that the community is entitled to based on improvements.
She actually showed me one yesterday that was a pool.
Yep.
And not been captured.
Yep. And again, it's, so, on the one hand, it's great for the resident that didn't pay that assessment on their improved property, but on the other side, you know, the, the rest of their town is paying for their current assessments, and it should be more equal sharing there. So this is a big gap. And again, I think we need to do, as you're suggesting, everything we can to fill it in.
The other, and the other reason with that is that when someone takes out a permit, we, we don't just automatically enter the assessment, because...
Right.
Someone may take, and it happens, people take permits out and they don't do the work.
And do the permits.
So we can only add it if it's completed. If they don't contact the building department to have an inspection done, if it requires an inspection, and it gets closed out, it's done, and we get notified of that. Unless we can verify in the field, or if it's an interior thing, I mean, you know?
I mean, isn't this also going to be a continuing issue with a revaluation on the horizon? Yes, yes.
And I've always said in my, you know, with proper staffing in the assessor's office, especially, if we can keep on top of things in a continuous, you know, with permits and fieldwork, the portion of the revaluation is less critical at that point, because you're already on top of it. You're not waiting on a revaluation to try to then pick up on everything that's been missed over five, 10 years.
And you're not picking up on everything, right? Because it's still a random sample, so...
So with the staffing, we'd have a reduced scope of the revow, and therefore, less cost of the revow.
So I have another question, and I don't know if this would impact, not, not this year, but next year or year after with that, the whole ADU thing out there, where depending on if we expand our regs for that, or if we happen to take the state reg, I mean, it could expand, people adding, you know, accessory dwelling units, which would have to, I would assume, be permitted, and then it would change the assessment. It's the accessory dwelling units that there's all that new legislation that the state is put out there, and we're, our zoning is going to be looking at potential expansion. I mean, I think they are of some of the, the things that we currently have, which would end up hitting you, and you'd want to capture any changes there. And I don't know if everybody's going to go out and build one, like, you know...
I'm dropping it a bit.
Sorry?
I bet we see five.
We'll see five. Okay, but, you know, well, you never know. So anyway, but that could be another need to add to your plate of things, right? And then the other question, sorry.
It's okay.
Is, the, there's some bill out there proposing to push off the, the revow because the market values are so high this year? Is this some, there's, I don't know who proposed it, it's in the state somewhere. Because the market values are so high this year, and this is a revow year, everybody's going to end up being evaluated at a higher market rate and paying more taxes until the next revow, when maybe the values drop, and there's a bill out there to potentially push off the...
There's always been...
Oh, there, okay.
Well, there's always been a statute out there to allow a town to postpone.
Okay.
With that, there's a lot that goes with it. It's not just, okay, we're just going to postpone it a year.
Yeah, yeah.
There's more to it than that. But this new one, I believe, is, would be a town, to allow towns to adopt it if they want. I'm not sure. I'm waiting to see more language on it and see how different it would be from what we currently have in statute.
Right, so it could be good for residents, right? But then we would lose, could, we would lose on the grand list side, I guess, right?
Well, it's, it's a trickle-down effect. You have to then spread it over several years, so it's more work for the assessor's office, too.
Okay.
It is, and let's not forget that the last revow, all the big houses came down substantially, and all the middle and small houses paid a ton more. And the big houses paid a ton less, so. I mean, again, there's a, there's a cycle to correction in all of these.
I mean, we've already started on the revaluation at this point.
Yeah, and if I could just quickly jump back to a point that Chris brought up about regionalism and staffing, since we're discussing the staffing piece. You know, something I've been a big proponent of for, for quite some time is to see if one of our regional entities could provide some contracted services to towns for both assessment functions as well as building official functions. It's something, you know, Henry and I have had conversations about as well. This has been a problem brewing in Connecticut for a very long time. We have such a shortage of people going into those professions, and then the certification and licensure requirements that go along with it. And we're just seeing the shortage getting worse and worse. And both the assessment function as well as the building official function is something that I think could have some backup on a regional level, whether that's perhaps through our Cog. Again, maybe we have unexpected retirement and unexpected medical leave. That ability to contract with, with the Cog for those services during those peak periods of, you know, increased workload, or again, a staffing shortage, is something I think that could be beneficial, because when you do have to go out and search for these positions, you might have multiple, you know, failed searches, or in the case where we've been looking for a property appraiser now for many, many months, and we're just not finding somebody with that skill set who's available. So it is something I know that the Cog has discussed, the Council of Small Towns, which I'm on the Board of Directors, have, have discussed that as well. The Farmington Valley Collaborative has discussed that. And Senator Whitaker often attends those sessions, and he was recommending some legislation that might help with, you know, help with people having the ability and access to becoming certified in those professions. So it is sort of a statewide problem that we're seeing the shortage, but hopefully, you know, some regional solutions to, to overcome those challenges.
And then just one last slide for you all under C and R. So this is how we fund our revow every five years. Instead of asking for it once every five years in a large chunk, we divide it into smaller chunks, and we put aside about $60,000 every year, so that at the end of the five years, we have the money that we need to complete the revow. So this is year five of five for this revow, and then next year, you'll see another $60,000, starting year one of five for the next revow. So this is just something that's recurring every year. And that's all I have, if you have any more questions. Great?
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
Do you, do you want to drag the slides, and I'll sit here?
Oh, sure. Yeah, because I'm going first anyway.
Melissa and I are going to share slides on this, on this next batch.
Okay, so we're going to cover a few different departments, the first being the Town Manager's Office, and that is tab four in your budget book. So the Town Manager's proposed, Office Proposed Budget for fiscal year '23 reflects about a 2.19% increase, or about $10,600. As you're aware, we have four full-time employees in our office. That does not include our graduate student intern, who has become an integral part of our team, for sure. So for budget highlights for Town Manager's Office, we are looking at about a $10,000 increase in the full-time salary line account due to salary increases. And we did include a small increase in the seasonal line item, and this is to account for the increase in minimum wage that's anticipated next fiscal year. Also, in tab four is general government. This budget reflects an 8.56% increase, or just under $10,000. This budget includes tuition reimbursement funds, and this covers townwide except for police officers. That is covered separately in the police department budget. It also covers all the copy and printing funds for the town hall building on this floor. It also covers telephone service funds, and that is townwide, as well as organization-wide training and development funds, and postage for all departments except for the special revenue fund and WPCA. They cover their own costs of postage. So for budget highlights for the general government account, we're anticipating an increase in our telephone service. That's our, our telephones are covered by Frontier, as well as our mobile data services, so our cell, cell plan, basically. We're also factoring in a $1,500 increase in conferences and education, and that's just due to anticipated increase in coaching and training fees. Okay, in terms of the Board of Selectmen, community services budget, this is under tab five in your book. This increases just under 1%, and it includes the first select person stipend, funding for the Board of Selectmen clerk, as well as other meeting clerks for other boards and committees, legal, sorry.
Can we go back, just, just to keep you, do you want the comments on the, the other one first, the questions, before we go on to that one?
Sure.
Sorry.
That's fine.
Sorry, just, on the general government, just remind us, conferences and education, that's for the entire building?
That is primarily for our, like, organization-wide training, our, when we do our leadership retreat, as well as funding for training for our division head team as well.
Yeah, so all departments, not just one department. That is encompassing all, all the departments from a leadership training standpoint.
Yes, that's sort of the bucket that we use when we're doing what I would call maybe like small group work. So if we're doing things like customer service training, we did that recently, where we offered it to the entire organization, or to Melissa said, you know, where we're doing things like the leadership retreat. That's really where we're budgeting the more group-oriented training versus sort of the individualized departmental training is usually budgeted within the department account, but this is, again, sort of more organization-wide type training that we do with all of the staff.
All right. And additionally, wait, oh, sorry.
I have a question, too.
The, I don't, I don't care about this number, I mean, in the sense of just, just education. Notice, and going back to Amy, the travel was, was down. I understand that, so, but when, how does travel work with the conference and education? Is, is there a component of the travel that is required, I mean, travel that's incurred because of the conferences? Is that in that number, or is that travel part of that travel, the line item travel? Just curious, I don't care about $500.
Yeah, that would be under, generally, the departmental budgets, like, each department that has travel would be under that budget. Again, this is more for paying for facilitators who, say, would come to us to do group training as opposed to that type of travel.
What is the leadership retreat in town?
Yeah, so we had started that a few years back, pre-COVID. It's been on hiatus during COVID, but it's something where we got the members of the department head team and our division heads together. Usually, we would do some professional development component with that, along with visioning, and, you know, what's going well, what would we like to do differently? It's been, it's been really nice. The department heads and the division heads really appreciated that, so we're hoping to, to get back to some semblance of that this spring. Last, last spring, what we did when the COVID numbers came down a little bit is sort of like a little mini-session that we did with division heads and department heads. We did outdoors, it was, it was very nice. But prior to that, it was more, a little more robust and comprehensive, and we could all sort of be indoors and, and in a room together.
So most things tend to take place in Simsbury, or is there any travel?
Yeah, it's definitely a mix. So what's reflected in general government, those are typically things that we're doing here, again, as an organization for the larger workforce. What's reflected within the departmental budgets, that's usually, again, more specialized to the department. So they might be traveling, you know, somewhere within the state, because it's, you know, maybe training being offered in Hartford, the stores campus, et cetera. Maybe they have to travel somewhere for, you know, specific to their licensure requirements. So that travel and conference that's in the departmental budget, that often does require travel. The types of courses that we're paying for out of general government don't typically require travel.
Does, so the leadership retreat, or, you know, any type of, if you attend an annual conference, is there any reporting back to the Board of Selectmen on just what's learned, you know, from these conferences and what's kind of been gained?
I don't think we've done that.
I don't have a formal mechanism for that, no.
But I imagine that just, it becomes part of your innate, your knowledge and your conversations, so I'm, so I'm sure that it's occurring. I'm sure you are getting, you're gaining value from your experiences. You're, you talk about the capital rate, I mean, your, your participation on that group, so you're bringing that back. You're not debriefing us everything, but it's, it's becoming part of your entire management experience.
That's correct. Yeah, I mean, when we go to ICMA, I, we're nerdy, but, I mean, I would definitely, we'd make sure not to go to the same workshops and then kind of share what we learned with each other, so it's sort of happening internally. But there's no formal report out, I guess.
Right.
I mean, have you, the general government, the reason I brought it up is, is it's ongoing staff engagement, right? And education is really what it is. And I think, to me, it's an important investment in the type of employer we are, to make sure that it's not just showing up from nine to five, pushing a bunch of buttons, answering the phone, and going home. There's more to the engagement and the role, and that's one of the places that I think we've, we've, we've been trying to invest in. And remind me, is the, some of the 360 and the, the coaching plans come out of that as well?
That's correct.
In terms of trying to push that down to your department heads in terms of getting feedback from their folks and make sure that we're improving as leaders as well?
Yeah, that's correct, Sean, thank you. Something initiative we started, I believe, three or four years ago now, is creating an executive coaching opportunity for a department head. You also noticed in the service improvement list that we recommended creating a coaching opportunity for our division heads annually as well. And our department heads who have participated in that experience have often said that it is life-changing, both personally and professionally for them. We've had really great success with that. It's been, I, I've personally engaged in that. And again, I would concur with our other department heads who have said it's just, again, a very good experience, both personally and professionally, and I think it's made us a stronger organization. And I, and I do want to thank, and very appreciative to the board, for our efforts to really beef up our professional development dollars over the last few years. It's very important. We have a lot of talent here. We have folks who are continuous learners. I think that's really important for them. It's important for the organization. It helps us deliver a better, you know, deliver a better service. And it's something we do get questions about from prospective candidates, you know? It's a very interesting, I would say, trend that's more, or maybe culture that's more specific to New England municipalities, a lot of, you know, towns and cities in, in New England, if they kind of cheap out on something, right? It's like professional development for staff. And, but it's something, right, that I think, again, people who are professionals, it's a passion, it's a vocation, they want that continuous learning. And so we do get that question a lot of times from very good candidates. So does your board support professional development? Are there professional development dollars for me? And those are good questions, and, and we're glad when candidates ask that. So that's just another example that, you know, we even get it from people before they even step foot through the door.
Well, that was leading me to the, the question as why, if, if it's so important to, to your, your goals and all of our goals, why it's a, it's an additional service? Like, it's in the service improvement list as opposed to being budgeted for education? Well, the seven, we're getting asked for $7,000 as a service improvement.
So we were asking for a service improvement. Right now, we have enough dollars to cover an executive coaching opportunity for a department head, so about one a year. But what we would like to do is to expand that, to include our division heads as well. But, you know, it's about $4,000 a year in order to offer the opportunity to somebody. And again, that's sort of a service level that we're not currently offering, but we think that it's a good investment to make in our staff members. And so that would be, again, a new, a new service or an enhancement that we would be providing to our division heads.
And, and what you're saying is that, so each department has their own conferences and education?
That's correct.
But it doesn't include division head costs?
It doesn't include...
Division head costs are included here.
It doesn't include the organization, like, the organization-wide effort. So the general government budget is reflecting the organization-wide things, like, again, if we're doing customer service training, for example, with the organization, or the leadership retreat, which is really, you know, crossing the entire organization. Those are the types of dollars right now that we're including in general government. Those are the types of dollars right now that we're including in general government. But again, if it's something more specific to the department, assessor certification, building official certification and licensure, social worker licensure, right, that's showing up within their specific departmental budget because it's a specific departmental need.
And one more question on conferences and education. So in the, in the town manager's office, last year, the budget was $6,000, and the, the projective is $2,000, right? And then we go back to $6,000 this year. Is that due to COVID or, you know?
Couldn't go anywhere.
Travel restrictions. You know, like, like everybody, you know, COVID really impacted our professional development opportunities that do require travel, even if it was in-state. A lot of, you know, sessions were canceled altogether. You know, there were travel restrictions in, in place at certain periods of time, you know, in terms of where we could move within the state, within the country. So COVID definitely impacted that.
Yeah, I frankly wasn't comfortable traveling to the West Coast in, when was it? October. So we were able to take advantage of the virtual option, but that's obviously a different experience than going in person with your colleagues. So COVID definitely was the driver for that.
Right. Okay. Can you just explain a little more about the labor relations, the increased cost there?
Under the legal budget? We haven't gotten there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just looking at.
Sorry, I had it myself.
$25,000, you want to get to that one?
It's like a big juicy state.
They always pick on the interns.
All right, so this slide was just sort of outlining the funds that are in the Board of Selectmen Community Services budget. I think we left off at legal notices. Anytime you all schedule a public hearing, we have to notice that in the newspaper. That costs money, so we budget for that here. This budget also includes our dues for our membership organizations like CCM, COS, Council of Small Towns, and CROG, which is our regional planning agency. The outside agency grants, those, obviously, are the largest item, line item in that, in your budget, and we'll, I think, talk in more detail on, on Saturday on that. But what we do is, as we have in years past, we present level-funded, except for the organizations that base their fee on a per capita basis. So we did include the slight increases for those agencies that are on a per capita basis, and everything else is based on prior year funding approved by you all. So there was one new request, and that's outlined, there's a summary in Tab 5 that kind of breaks this down for you, but with them, a couple of our organizations asked for increases in funding.
Melissa?
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell me where the six, what, what the 64757, what's included in that?
Yep, so it's everything that we funded last year, the current year, at level funded, except for those organizations that are based on a per capita fee, so.
Oh, everything.
Yeah, so if you look at that summary, that page, I think you're on it right now.
This page?
The next one, yep.
Yeah.
If you look at the FY '22 budgeted column, it's everything in there except for those few minor increases for the agencies that are based on a per capita.
That's up to the 64. That's these?
Yeah.
Because I didn't, I really.
It says BOS Community Services is part of the 64757.
Yes, thank you, because that, she also includes the ones that are in our community and social services budget.
The only way I could come up with the change was the, the change, which didn't line up to those four, that, whatever. So I'll, I'll relook at it. I just couldn't come up, the 1138, which was the diff, the change from '22, you could get from looking at the change to the required ones.
The 46, the 182, the 439.
And we can present this more cleanly on Saturday when we.
This number, 64757. But I'll try it again now, that I know it's in it.
No, we can drop a column into that chart that we present usually on, on Saturday when we talk about all of the outside agency requests, we can, we can present that so it's clear.
And then last year, I brought my last year one, we, did, I know you, I think you said this already, we kept, we didn't increase any funding last year or take on anybody in that, correct?
Oh goodness, I think we did.
We bumped it real fast.
That was two years, I think that was two years ago.
We bumped it real fast two years ago.
Two years.
SCT two years ago.
Yeah, so maybe we didn't, I'd have to go back.
I would have to go back. I'd have to go back and look.
Pardon me?
I'd have to go back and look.
If we could, yeah, because I was just trying to see to come here.
Over time.
If we were going back to last year's level, or if we were going, it was hard to tell. Some of them I could tell.
Big level-funded in the real house, they had asked us for that.
Right, okay.
That's what we did.
But, yeah, I was just, wasn't, I know we didn't go up, you know, we didn't give promise to Jordan here. I don't think we gave to Gifts of Love. I think we did do the new, the new ask last year, but I wasn't sure.
I think the only one I see is an increase of 2,000 to Meals on Wheels, but that was paid for by the Donnelley Trust.
Yeah, that was paid by the trust. Thank you, Amy.
So everybody with 21 budgeted stayed the same, is what you're saying? Okay, thank you.
Except for those that are, you know, per capita driven, so.
Yes, that's required people.
There may have been a.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Do I take over?
I'm going to let Maria take over for a few slides.
Okay. Is it easier if I just sit here?
If that's fine with you, I can.
Okay. So regarding what we call the health budget, that is our contribution to the Farmington Valley Health District. We are expecting a small increase there. The per capita assessment is going up from $7 to $7.50. We actually, in our census population estimate, have a small decrease in the population, so that overall impact is about a $6,000 increase. Our contribution is on a proportional share. Usually, Simsbury and Farmington are the largest towns, therefore, we have the, you know, the larger shares, but again, it is all proportional based on our population. Something that the Health District is currently working on, they are preparing a list of pandemic recovery needs that could be potentially funded with ARPA dollars. You know, when they have that proposal ready to send up to the towns, again, they're thinking is that, again, it would be on a proportional share based on the size of each town. It would be very similar in nature to the requests they made with the second round of stimulus funding, which was the CARES funding. And what I have done at the moment, at the work group meeting of the ARPA folks in January, I had recommended putting in a placeholder of about $250,000 for Health District needs. Based on what they're currently preparing, I don't think it will reach that number, but again, you know, we can potentially spend these funds through 2026, and not knowing what, you know, potentially may, you know, lay ahead with future variants, et cetera, I do think it would be prudent just to keep some amount of, again, money as, as a placeholder for the Farmington Valley Health District. If they were a municipal department, obviously, right, they would have gotten those, you know, sort of funds directly through us, but because they are a regional entity, they will be making a request to us, and I do think that's quite reasonable.
Is that, but that's not in here yet?
Correct, we don't have that from the Health District yet.
What are we going to put, should we put a placeholder in the budget for ARPA so it goes to referendum with an amount? Because otherwise.
I think I would do it as a supplemental appropriation. I think they're hoping to perhaps make requests to municipalities in April sometime, but again, you know, whether or not we make the Health District wait until July as part of our annual budget process, I, I would probably recommend addressing it as a supplemental appropriation when in fact that request does come to us.
Right, because I'll be before.
Yeah.
Before it's all.
Yep. All right, so some of our areas of focus for '22, '23, we would very much like to work on updating our personal rules and regulations, other than some housekeeping edits in terms of changing for select person to town manager. The personal rules and regulations have not been updated since 2009. They are quite dated, so not only to reflect current practice, but changes in, you know, laws and regulations, et cetera, that have happened since then. We do work closely with the Finance Department. We are really just in a continual process of working to refine and quantify our baseline and our capital needs. We continue to refine the information we receive from the facilities master plan, so we made some great strides, I think, in the current budget, but we'll continue to, to work on that as we move forward. Another area of focus for us is continuing to work with the EDC. A lot of the assignments for them tend to be project and task-oriented. They've been a very good group of folks for us to work with, and, you know, some of our areas of focus with them have been business visitations, Main Street, and some of the volunteers on EDC are working on the marketing materials refresh. And we're also going to be working on a welcome letter or packet for new businesses. So a key area for us, as town manager, I by charter also double as the Personnel Director, so Melissa and myself and the other two staff members in our office do human resources work in addition to our other municipal responsibilities. One of our major areas of responsibility is serving as the chief negotiator for all of our collective bargaining agreements. We have six unions. We are hoping in, in the coming months that we will have our arbitration decision with our CSCA groups following that award. We will have implementation of the successor collective bargaining agreements. The only contract we have coming due this fiscal year is dispatchers. We are currently preparing information for them as part of that process, but we will be negotiating a successor CBA with that group and then implementing that in the upcoming year. We'll continue to support the work of the Board of Selectmen and various subcommittees that you have established, including, you know, spending a lot of focus and energy on the ARPA dollars. And the last bullet point here, which is just, again, I think a really special project, a wonderful opportunity for the community, is we are continuing to work on preservation of the Meadowwood property. We're working with some great partners at SHIPO and the Trust for Public Land, and working on some barn restoration efforts, as well as agricultural stewardship of the policy, oh, excuse me, of the, of the parcel. And we do currently have an RFP out for the portion of the parcel that was preserved for agricultural purposes. We do have that RFP out, and again, really just looking forward to working with a good steward of that land. So some of the other miscellaneous budgets we just thought were worth highlighting here were the insurance, LAP or comp item, and I'll let Melissa take this.
Oh, sure. Not a whole lot here. We're, we're essentially flat on this budget. It includes the items you see up there, the liability auto and property, our workers' compensation coverage, our cyber policy, crime fiduciary liability. We do have an underground storage tank at the library, so we have to get coverage for that, and our public official bonds.
Our cyber rate didn't go up?
Our cyber rate went up, but not significantly, which was shocking.
Nice.
Yes.
How's our, I mean, I haven't looked at the insurance exhibits in years. How is our workman's comp experience right now as a whole?
Yeah, it's.
Like on wood, you know, but.
Yeah.
Do we have any monsters out there that are, that are killing us?
No, and it's interesting, I actually, I chair the operating and underwriting committee for KERMA, and we just had a meeting on Wednesday, and they did report out on sort of the work comp pool as a whole. And for two consecutive years now, the entire pool has also seen a decrease. And so actually, for our work comp rates, we were anticipating, I believe it's a 3% decrease in our premium for the upcoming year, so it's, it's been good. Our claims experience has been.
We have a healthy, responsible workforce, you know. We're, we have the healthiest workforce, I think, of all the, you know, the competing towns.
And you stop wearing open-toed shoes, Peterson.
We don't get our final premiums until later in the spring, so we've usually adopted the budget before we get the final, so there's sometimes a little bit of adjustments, which is why if you look at the individual line items, there's a little bit of minor up and down between work comp and LAP, but it's, it's flat, and that's what we're projecting, so. Nothing else too exciting on that one.
And for our health insurance fund, again, for those of you who have been on the board for a while, the good news is that we continue to be in a much improved and, and stable position with that particular fund. While we were preparing the budget based on the information that we had available to us at the time, the superintendent and I recommended no budgeted increase for the health insurance line item, which is great in terms of, you know, taking some budgetary pressures off of us. Our estimates that the health insurance fund balance at fiscal year around '22, '23 would be around 26% of expected claims. I think that's a really good place for us to be, you know, generally, we want to be at least 25% of expected claims. That would be the equivalent of what's called being fully insured. We are self-insured for health insurance purposes. You know, myself and I, and our employee benefits consultant, you know, would typically recommend that we would want to be in the neighborhood of 25 to 30% for, for the health insurance reserve. We did see during the pandemic that some of our health insurance claims temporarily decreased. A lot of, there were a lot of deferrals of preventive care, elective procedures, procedures getting pushed out, but we are, you know, starting to see somewhat of a return to normal in, in utilization.
Are you anticipating kind of a spike from people who put things off?
You know, we thought that might happen, you know, initially. We haven't seen that occur yet.
Yeah, that hasn't come to fruition yet, but when we did our budget for fiscal year '22, we did build in a cushion for a potential spike.
And just a quick note on employee benefits. So this is where we make contributions to our, our DB plan, our DC plan, and what we did, based on the advice of our financial advisor and our actuary, is that we included an interest rate assumption of 6.5%. The superintendent did as well. That our current rate is 6.625%, so that is a slight decrease in the assumption rate. And if we took a look at the pension plans, the OPEP trust, that, that's just a slight increase from a budgetary perspective. The actuarial recommended contribution for the pension contribution, as well as the OPEP contribution, comes to just an increase of just under $20,000. So again, I think that's, you know, good, sound, sort of long-term financial stability movement that we can make on the interest rate at a relatively modest cost this fiscal year.
I have a question under the defined contribution. With the change of $50,090, is the 41 point, is it percentage change? Is it due to retirements, or is it, is the benefit pegged to the CPI, or?
Sure, so what I, what I can share is, you know, we've had a lot of retirements over the last few years. We have a lot of new staff members coming in. We're definitely seeing millennials and sort of that next generation of folks below them are making different choices. And the last time we ran the analysis, I think it was in the fall, we were finding that since employees had the choice of picking the DC plan around 2016, those employees that have a choice, about 70% of the staff members who have a choice are actually picking the DC plan. And then we do have a couple of our employee groups where to new hires, the DB plan is closed out. So our AFSCME union, which is the Parks and Public Works Employees, that's actually our largest union, they do not have a choice, they do have to go into the DC plan, so if somebody retires, their replacement is most likely leaving the DB, leaving sort of us and contributing to the DB plan, their replacement is going into the DC plan. And then our dispatchers group, which is a small group, they also do not have a choice. So I think it's a little bit of both in that, you know, we have some new hires who are required to go into the DC plan, but we're just also seeing some of our younger staff members who are, do, or make different choices and are selected to go into the DC plan. So I think we'll continue to see that DC contribution increase over time as we have more staff members who are contributing to that plan.
What you're announcing is a corresponding decrease in the DB plan or another increase if they did pick that, right?
Right, so for example, the analysis we did with the CSCA groups is that if, in fact, we do close out the DB plan to those groups, that for about a 15-year period of time, there would actually be a financial increase to us because the employee contributions would no longer, you know, be going into the.
Not that we're self-funding correctly. But again, from a current standpoint, when we hire people, they have to go to one of the plans, so there's going to be a cost increase somewhere.
Yes.
It's just more heavily weighted to the DC than we've seen.
Yeah.
What percentage is required DB still?
It varies by bargaining unit, and it is something that we've made some substantial progress on in the last year, year and a half of negotiations. It was tiered for many of our groups depending on their date of hire. Just from a policy standpoint, we were very uncomfortable with that because we felt that it was important within our employee groups to have parity and equity. So over the life of most of our contracts, our more tenured employees will be contributing a minimum of 7% to the DB plan. One of our groups is currently contributing 8%, and some of our newest hires and a few of our groups are contributing 10% of their salary to the DB plan.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
What's OPEP, too?
OPEP is 2%.
Yeah. And we are still, I think, the only municipality that has the OPEP funding level that we do, right?
I don't know if we're the only, but there aren't many.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We were one of the first to even start funding that obligation, right? Thanks to the board funding and their work, so.
Okay. So before we touch on the CNR project, I realize now that we don't actually have a slide for the legal budget, so.
Oh, we could speak to that.
I was going to say, are you dancing overhead?
No. When she asked, I'm like, I actually don't think we
She came out, we told her it was coming, and it's not there.
Yeah. She's like, nice try. So I guess we can talk about that now?
Yeah, so under our legal budget, there's our general retainer for our general counsel, which is Bob DiCrescento with Update Kelly and his firm. We also budget about $10,000 a year for additional, like, litigation, you know, assessment appeals, things of that nature that fall outside of the general retainer that his firm does handle for us. That line item does also account for our labor legal expenses, which is specialized counsel. So that is for things like assisting with contract negotiations, assisting with grievance arbitration, you know, more complex labor matters that we may have. So particularly for things related to ADA issues, certain FMLA-type issues. Again, some of those more complex issues, while we're very fortunate and we do have a very skilled in-house person, you know, there are just more complex issues that it's, you know, I think advisable to get that specialized advice. So that is the account that we pay for that. And again, just really looking more at actual spend in terms of, you know, what we're utilizing. We think that increasing that account by about $25,000 would be more accurate of actual spend. One area I think that we do a nice job in, where we tend to save some dollars, is we do serve at the table as the chief negotiator for our collective bargaining sessions. So we do that ourselves. We prepare the initial round of proposals ourselves. What we do have is we have our attorney review our work before we submit it. But again, we're not having them do the original drafting. We're not having them come to each and every session. So I do think that's a really cost-effective way of dealing with our sessions because we do have six bargaining groups, and that could get expensive quite fast. Where we do involve the attorney in negotiations is if we're going to do a mediation session or if we are going to experience a grievance arbitration. And as probably some of our more tenured members know, we know it was really important to the Board of Finance to try and finish closing out the DB plans. That parent organization for CSCA, as the parent organization, they object to that, even closing it for new hires. So that was not something that we have, or would have been able to resolve sort of amicably, and that is currently in grievance arbitration. So those are some of the kinds of things that we would typically use labor counsel for.
We're in a one-negotiation year.
Correct. We only have dispatchers coming up this year.
So we dropped down pretty heavily, but so that 25 again is because we just think there's going to be more legal requests?
It's just, again, what we thought was maybe a little more reflective of
Yeah, I think it reflects
Of actual
Actuals for the last couple of years.
But I would go along with what Sean's saying. Last year, the project, for this coming year, the projected is 50, which is just like a $15,000. So this is a $25,000 increase. You know, what would justify that in costs? And is there any, is there anything that, you know, we had Bob, like, he's up pretty much ours, that he could take up on that $25,000 that we have him on staff, sort of?
Yeah, again, you know, Bob is great, and again, we use him for our general counsel, land use issues, FOIA requests, again, just general counsel, but labor unemployment is really a specialized area.
Yeah.
I was just asking.
Well, I see in, like, fiscal year '21, it was $72,000. I mean, what was it? Was that, was there something unusual going on that year, or?
Yeah, so again, you know, I think we had quite a few personnel management issues that needed to be addressed. We were successful.
Hard year.
Yeah, it was, and we were successful in all of our arbitration cases. But again, we did have a few personnel management situations we had to work through.
But I guess if, I don't know how far back you did a look back, and I don't have the benefit of seeing a lot of past years, but I don't know if that made, you know, the overall average a little high, and hopefully we don't have those kinds of issues
Agreed.
Happening again, so.
We're on track for 90, though, this year, right?
Right, and a big part of that expense was the grievance arbitration regarding the pension.
So where are we, where do you think we're going to end up for '22? Are we doubling the 45, or is it coming in lower than that?
I can look at it.
I'm sorry, when you say '22, do you mean '22, '23, or current year?
Current year, so.
Current year is estimated at 50.
I don't know that that's accurate.
Yeah, we can take a look at that.
We've already spent a half.
Yeah, we can take a look at revising that projection.
Yeah, I'd be surprised if we're only going to use $4,700 of legal fees for
You guys are paying attention to that column more than you used to.
I'm just like, oh, that's good. Yeah, no, we can definitely relook at the projection for the current year.
Especially now that we're this far into the fiscal year, we can definitely, because
we do, we pull the, you know, back in December is when we look at these, so.
Yeah, no, no, I get it. And I'm not nipping, but again, am I doubling the 45 because we think we're going to spend 90, and then the 65 looks like a deal?
Yeah.
Or are we only going to get 55, and then we're going up 10 from our current year, and then it's?
No, but that'll give you a little more data to work off of. So you have fiscal year '21 and '22.
Yeah, we can do that. Again, that particular arbitration case was very, you know, time-consuming. It required multiple days of testimony and briefs and reply briefs.
Those are long-term structural changes.
Exactly.
You know, we don't want to go to arbitration, but we try to do the right thing, and then we're way up there. I mean, you are, what, five and O at arbitration? Six and O?
Probably, yeah, a little higher. But there's also interest arbitration, and there's grievance arbitration. And so for interest arbitration, I'm sorry if I misspoke, I might have referred to the contract negotiation as grievance arbitration, but that is interest arbitration. So you're also, you know, dealing with three panel members that you're paying for in addition to your attorney's time, and addition to that time to also, you know, prepare briefs and things of that nature. And then, sorry, and we're back to your question about that year. We also had a pension interest arbitration with the police unit. We were successful in that case as well. And we restructured the DB plan and created a new tier, and then were able to now offer an optional DC plan. And that was about an estimated $1 million in savings over 15 years. So while, again, we had some, you know, we had to front some legal costs for that interest arbitration, the long-term gain was, you know, was worth it.
Yeah, well, I mean, I certainly appreciate that legal fees, you know, they're usually based on finite things that happen that you don't necessarily think are going to recur, but it doesn't take long for them to add up either.
Yes.
So it can make it volatile and
We're getting updated
Yeah, but we can update that projection, absolutely.
And then again, forgive me, to my colleague's question before, I was having the same trouble Wendy was in terms of, I can't add up, I can't make sense of what's under the 64 based on what's in the budget book for the community support.
That's okay, we can
So I came up with 53, so.
We can clarify it.
I trust you, it's just the math's not adding up for what's on the outside of the page because, again, it's budgeted, requested, but there's no proposed.
That's okay, we can definitely clean that up for you.
Just so we can, roughly from the same sheet of music.
Yeah.
Do you want to take a five?
Can we just finish this and then we're
One more slide?
Okay. All right, so one CNR project showing up for us that we'll speak to. This is not a new item, this is an ongoing program. For our newer members, we had our public safety radio system, which covers police, ambulance, public works, parks and rec, the board of ed. That system reached end of life, so a couple of years ago, we had a very large capital project to replace that system. After some analysis, we determined that we had an opportunity to share the fire district's existing system, and that's been a very good arrangement. The implementation has been completed on that project. So with that new system, we have our own sort of ongoing operating costs associated with that, and that will be a new item that you'll see in the police budget for fiscal year '23 for the first year of that system going live. This is separate. This is for the items that address sort of our shared infrastructure with the fire district. So we did sign an MOU with them last year and agreed to split the cost of maintenance, repairs, and inspections of the towers related to the system, as well as network infrastructure 50/50. So by January 15th of each year, you know, I work with the fire district, determine what they're anticipating for our shared infrastructure needs, and then this fund will support those needs. So there's two items there for the upcoming year anticipated. Any questions?
How much did we save on that tower or the radio upgrade that you and Lieutenant Siffel?
Probably 1.2.
It gives $2 million, something, $2.5 million?
Yeah, we were planning on $2.5 in it.
Remember that big presentation?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good job, Melissa.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we breaking, are we?
Are you done?
Oh, yes.
Do you guys want to take a five-minute break?
How much is left?
Okay.
Are you ready?
Henry, thanks for
Go ahead, Henry. Okay, ready, thanks. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Henry Miega, I'm the building official for the town. So, and it's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
First time. This should be relatively quick because I know it's getting late. The proposed budget, as you can see here, the $692,349, an increase of 4.92, that's $32,000. I think most of that will be in the full-time employees, and you can, we can read through these, Planning Community Development, $385,945, 5-point percent increase or $18,000. Building Department Budget, $306,404, that's a 4.73 increase or $13,851. You can see the full-time employees at 7.45, four for planning, 3.6 for building. And one of those, as you might know, is we contract out one of our full-time employees to Bloomfield, so we share services with Bloomfield. That's beneficial to both departments. It allows us to offset our costs, and Bloomfield is very happy to have that individual over there for his expertise. We have for the $12,665 increase for planning full-time salaries, general wage increase, and you can see that the next line item, $575 for salaries for general wage increases for the building department as well. This is not really unusual, it's consistent with the rest of the town. And we are in the middle of a staffing transition. You might know, we have a new planner coming on board, which we're excited about to get some staffing. Kind of, it's always difficult when people are moving and you have absences, and I can kind of give at least a commercial pat on the back because the team up there has really worked together really hard to kind of keep things going, and so far, nothing has fallen through by the wayside. And I think we gave a presentation kind of mid-year with regards to the building department and activity levels, and we can really say that as a department, I would challenge anybody to find a more efficient for numbers of permits, dollar volumes, numbers of inspections per employee. It just, and also, just reflecting on that with regards to how it reflects in the general, the evaluations, et cetera. I was interviewing, an interview, an individual in another town. They did accessibility, how building departments were accessible as compared to the previous administration. Their building permits went up substantially in numbers and volume because of a new way of approaching, more customer-friendly, more accessible. So that is reflected in how many permits you get in, how many permits you get in and inspections is reflected in how many pieces of property go to the assessor and then go to the tax base. So there is a direct relationship to customer service and the bottom line. And not to mention, the bottom line is, you want to have good customer service because that's really the issue. It's not, not just the dollars, but we're in a budget hearing now, so the dollars are really important.
Well said.
And we have the shared permitting software, we see that reallocated for building and planning for that software. And in today's world, the software is really important. Some of that access to the building department is because online permitting, and we've done some remote inspections as well as part of that to try to improve our efficiencies.
I just, I do have a question on that one.
Sure.
I guess that this is reallocation, but the number on building didn't go down, and so it's doubling in cost?
Yeah, so, yes. So we really, again, because we are in transition, so, you know, Henry particularly, and, you know, the budget team, we were more involved in the preparation of the operating budget, and we found that the contractual increases for the permitting software that we do have needed to be budgeted for a little differently to make sure that we are capturing the full cost of that contract. So we did catch that and are appropriately showing the contracted price for the software that we're using.
So it's $18,550?
Correct.
But it just does, it only shows, like, it doesn't show it as an increase
Well, the other
From the 10, right?
Yep, so the other thing that we felt was important is that it is shared software, the entire department uses it, the entire department benefits for it. For some reason, that had been just showing up in the building division side of the house. And again, since it's a shared resource for the entire department, we thought it was more appropriate to share that cost 50/50 between the planning division and the building division.
More reflection of how it's actually being used over time. Initially, it was just a building permit software, then it became, everybody gets involved, everybody signs off, then it became bigger and bigger, so that it becomes more of an interactive teammate approach as opposed to
Yeah, no issue with the accounting.
It's just how it's shown, isn't it confusing? Or is that?
Again, it's just, you know, the accounting doesn't bother me. What I'm questioning is, we spent 12 grand on it in '21. We're only going to spend 10 grand on it in '22, and now we're going to spend $18,500 on it in '23. So that's, that's the change that was identified?
Yeah, and we can double-check, again, the current year estimate on that to see if that reflects the contracted price appropriately.
Again, not our year, it's just
Yeah, I'll make a note of that.
Same thing. I have no issue with splitting it.
And in part, that might have been reflected in regards to changing view, from view permit to municity, and then expanding it with reverse of municity, and there was some incidental costs with regards to overlap.
Okay.
So that, I don't have all those numbers, but I'm sure that
Yeah, just something we can follow up on for Saturday or for whatever.
Yep, we can, definitely.
All right. $275 here for the, so they split it out in the two budgets. So it was all here before, but it was showing 12 on a full cost, estimated 10, which I imagine is short, and then still the $9275. So right now, it just looks like it's doubled. And my only question is, is should the building side have come down, or is it really that $18,550 is we're saying? And if that's the real number, so be it. Just want to make sure that we're following the math.
Yeah, we can definitely double-check the current year contract cost.
That would be, okay. The next line, okay. Areas of focus, I think, are somewhat obvious in the sense of zoning commission and comprehensive rewrite of zoning regulations. You're probably all familiar with regards to how complex that can be. Having personal experience in the town I used to live in, doing a substantial rewrite in those, realize that it's, you know, there's unintended consequences if you don't get it right. So it really is important, and it's no small feat. Creating a permitting handbook with detailed guidance for residents and developers and land use, I think, is an outreach that we all propose to do and would like to do, time allotting. And we'll get to that in a minute as far as public outreach and how for service improvement. I think that's part of it. If people know what to expect and have surety, you get a lot more response, and you get the reputation of a community you want to come to to build because it's easier, you have some sense of surety and ability to get done what you need to do. Even though you can put more restrictions on, the ability to get it done is really important. The FEMA maps, the upgrades in Farmington River watershed have to be updated. We're probably going to see more of that from the federal level all the way down, and I think for storm managements, et cetera. Maps expected in 2022. This is primarily the planning end of it, so I'm living a little bit here from what I know.
That's why our berm, berm's going up, all right, the golden berm at the sewer treatment plant. We got to raise it a couple feet for the new FEMA map.
And you're going to engage in plan review, permitting inspections, and key development projects, and we, you can see some of those that are going on now. If you haven't seen it, that is McLean's, the building to the lower left. It's a substantial project, pretty complex, and
It's way around back.
It is.
It's past the physical.
There are going to be some beautiful apartments, to be honest with you, and we're looking forward to the Andes renovations and tenant. Curaleaf is planned on an expansion, and they're just waiting on some minor things from communication with the fire marshal on that, and they're ready to go ahead. And we have some additional residential development. We've, the bridge at Talcott is coming toward its final build-out. Highcroft is, excuse me, coming toward the end of Cambridge Crossing. Similarly, they're ongoing, but they, Cambridge Crossing has a little bit more to go. Barber Cove, which is, I think you might be familiar, is across the street. That would be, I think, 229 units that are going to be there.
Is there any residential, is there any commercial on that?
Not that I'm aware of. It's residential, which would be substantial. Again, given the fact that it's in the center of town and we have the form-based
Yeah, yeah.
Planning, it seems to make sense to our walkable communities, and I don't hesitate to say that those are going to sell out relatively quickly. Is that Sims-Croft's own project? No, no. Nelson Construction is going to be the contractor.
But the property, is it transferred ownership?
They transferred it, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and they anticipate May start in groundwork. And the former Iron Horse Inn, you kind of know, that kind of made the news.
The gold shovels.
It seems kind of funny that we did, you know, close to 1,200 living units, and then they renovate a building and it makes the news on the front page of the
That is weird.
It's okay.
Military purposing a building.
It is.
Value in that rather than
There really is.
And it's quite the nicest building in town, too.
It really is.[1771.82] And to be honest with you, I think they approached it from a bright way. They're basically gutting and redoing. So that was really encouraging as opposed to somebody trying to shoehorn something. It was, I think that the approach is really good. And so far, the work that we've inspected is just fine, great, no problem. So that's really encouraging, especially being in, as you said, a repurposed building in the center of town. That's, I think, what everybody would like to see. And is that all, the end of our slides? That is it. Okay, that pretty much encapsulates what we have for building. I will kind of, with regards to, you know, the personnel and what's going on, we're very fortunate. We had one item that we put in there that's for the contracted services. Originally, we went to the Board of Finance. I think we had well over doubled that budget. We brought it back based on the fact that we were fortunate to get an individual who wants to be semi-retired and will work just when needed as opposed to having to feed, you know, a position hourly. So we anticipate that that's been a tremendous help for us. And part of that basically ability to lighten our schedule a little bit will allow us to do some of those community outreach things and hopefully really not only get some of the backlog done with regards to old permits, and that was something with regards to that. Our policy since I've been here is to every time we go out to a house, if there's any old permits, we take them with us and we close them out. So that, we've closed out thousands of old permits by just doing that. The real estate market with regards to houses being sold, every time they're sold, the real estate loss is that you have to at least notify, so people prefer to have them closed. So that's a big chunk of our workload is closing out old permits and houses that are transferred. And again, that brings everything up to date and helps the assessments as well. But we don't have at this point any kind of tickler file where if something, if somebody doesn't call us for some time, we, you know, track them down or, you know, send them a "by the way" letter. There isn't any program to do that right now.
So if they don't get closed out, then they would not make it to the assessor's radar, right? Because they weren't closed out.
Correct. Any other questions?
I just have a quick question again about that conference in education. You know, took the big dip with 6,500, then last year, the projected actual is 2,500, 3,500. Is that more for like certification and things like that?
Primarily it is. It was a placeholder. We have state-funded education. And I met with the director this morning. I actually had to do a class with him for American Institute of Architects. But they are upgrading their programs. So 26 cents per thousand goes to the state for training fire marshals, building officials, 911 operators, and architects, engineers, and builders. They're doing more online, so yes, we have ability to do that. In addition to that, we have conferences that we are not required to, but there is an option to go through. Connecticut Building Officials, Fire Marshals Associations meetings, and they're usually $20 apiece kind of thing. There's an annual conference in UMass for the entire New England region. We oftentimes, when it's available, will attend that. Some of that was for code change hearings that in the past I've attended, not recently, but in my history, probably 16 or 17 years of code change hearings at the national level. So, but I try to do those online. And to be honest with you, it gets a little tiring to go and do those because you're, you know, in a room for four days looking at code changes.
Yeah, yeah, it's not fun. New Mass sounds like--
Not really. You know, it sounds like a vacation.
Definitely don't take a vacation.
But I think there's probably very few that are, outside of finance, I think there's very few that are as important as getting, continuing to be in front of the curves on things about land use, building regulations, engineering, and whatnot. So I appreciate you going.
Thank you. It pays dividends in a lot of ways.
Yeah, no, Chris, I just really want to thank you for acknowledging that because so much of the work that Henry and his team do is really life safety oriented. And, you know, it's just, it's very important work that they do. And again, it's very important that they maintain their licensure, which is required by the state in order, again, to do the work that they do and to do it properly. So thank you for acknowledging that.
And being, Henry's focus on customers, this is an engine for economic development. And, you know, sometimes, we know that we sometimes have some building regulations and oversight and some particular-- Okay, I'm not getting in trouble. So anyways, but that's, it's important to be in front, and it's important to be a liaison and a bridge to our, the people who are investing in our community. And I appreciate that, so it's critical.
Thanks.
I have one more question, kind of just, if you could speak a little bit to the building department fees. I know, like, fiscal year '21 was really high, I think in part, I don't know if it was pandemic-driven with all the work being done, or if it was a lot of apartments that came on. And it kind of seems like we're seeing some tapering off in that. Could you just talk a little bit about kind of what is happening with that?
We had a spike because of the solar farm. We actually got a good chunk of fees for that. And fees, they, services follow, lag behind fees. So for McLean's, they come in with one fee, that's one year. You're actually building it the next year, so most, all of your work is somewhat upfront for plan review, but then it kind of lags.
So the fees are front-loaded?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much. And they are variable. You know, you take your best guess, but your only best guess is what's approved through planning and zoning, and then when they move forward. And most of the time, we're able to do a pretty good job because there are apartments, et cetera. Those bigger blocks and the fact that, for instance, Iron Horse, they will probably build out relatively quickly, but relatively over a couple of years. If the same holds true, and the ridges, they're selling as faster than they can build them. So they're having a problem with the management, or the construction end of it can't keep up with the sales.
Right. Yeah.
Anything else that can help?
Thank you, Henry.
Great, thank you.
Kristin, thank you for waiting to the end.
Well, clearly you're safe the best of the luck.
That's what I'm saying.
I just look over here.
I'm always happy to be here to support my colleagues. So I'll try to keep this quick, but I have a lot of slides and I think a lot of information for you. So for our Department of Community and Social Services, our total operating budget for the proposed upcoming fiscal year is 649,221. And that's an increase of 17,445 or 2.76%. And those costs are driven mostly by the administration and direct service with our contractual increases and step increases, as well as an increase in the senior center for the same reasons, contractual and step increases. And a 1.5%, 1.5.9% increase for senior transportation. And that is contractual. We have in our department 6.31 FTEs. And that is comprised of five full-time staff, one part-time staff, and two kitchen-cafe staff. Our areas of focus will be following the increased demand in service related to the pandemic. We will successfully implement the relocation of the food pantry to the Shepherd of the Hills Lutheran Church. We saw quite a bit of growth in our Cheese Day participation, which is our major food program, over the course of the pandemic. Prior to the pandemic, we were averaging 80 households per month. And at the peak of the pandemic, we were up to 140 households. And that included 45 families, which many of them were new to us. Over the year, we served a total of 193 unduplicated households. We are now averaging about 100 households per Cheese Day. So it's come down a little bit, but we kept about 20 of our new households have stayed on with us. We'd like to work to increase the community's knowledge of our programs and services through community outreach and events. That was, that's been one of our goals for the past couple of years, but COVID, of course, hasn't allowed us to do that. So we're hoping that as we emerge from the pandemic, we'll be able to do some more outreach and focus on some of our complexes such as OJ Ginn, Owen Murphy, and Virginia Connolly. We'd like to try to increase donations to the department and design and implement an annual appeal. And if approved, we will successfully onboard our two new social workers utilizing the ARPA funding and successfully implement new programs and services related to those two new social workers, if approved. For budget highlights, we have just over $12,000 increase or 3.62% in full-time salaries. And again, that's due to anticipated general wage increase and negotiated contractual step increases. A new cost for us this year is $3,600 to support the space leased for the new food pantry location. And the full cost of that lease is reflected in the budget with offsetting trust revenue. We have, again, the $2,630 increase to our dialaryne transportation, and that's a contractual increase. The full cost of dialyride is reflected in our budget, but there is offsetting grant revenue of $40,720.
Is that a per capita number, or how does that get figured out?
The amount for dialyride?
Yeah.
That's a good question. We've had a contract with Martel for years, and we've basically been doing about a 2% increase every year with them. That also includes the cost of gas.
Gotcha. So I mean, they have wage increases, they have their own costs, so that makes sense, okay.
Yeah. And not included in this budget, but just to remind you that over the last two years, we did successfully apply for and receive a grant from the Transit District to replace our two buses. We're currently working on replacing them. One has been built, but it's stuck in a lot waiting for a chip, so we haven't received it yet. But it's coming, I've been told. Some other highlights, we have a slight decrease in the senior center part-time salaries. That's our kitchen-cafe workers. Over the course of the pandemic, we took the opportunity to do a little bit of restructuring of the hours in the cafe. And we also have two new staff members that we were able to just slightly reduce their hours and still accomplish serving our two twice-week lunches. The full cost of both Tuesday and Wednesday lunch programs are reflected in the budget, but we do have offsetting revenue from the Belden Trust Fund in the amount of $9,360. And you'll see that in the operating transfers. The big talk tonight is our proposed service improvement. We're really excited, and we hope that you will be too, about the possibility of adding two new social workers. And that would be, the proposed funding for that is through the ARPA funds. So there would be no general fund or taxpayer impact if these two positions were implemented. And after December 31 of 2026, we would evaluate those two positions and determine if the need is still present in the community. The cost factors into these two positions are the two salaries, which includes benefits, startup costs, which would include things such as furniture, IT needs, and other housekeeping issues with starting two new positions. We don't have any usable furniture or old IT equipment, as you've heard from Rick. Pretty much when they're done, they get cycled out. So we would be starting fresh for these two new positions.
Kristin, exactly. In regards to the furniture, we also typically don't have sort of excess furniture kicking around. But when we do have to acquire furniture, we do tend to try and be green. And there is a firm out of Manchester that we work with that refurbish old, essentially, pieces of office furniture. We obviously can acquire it at a lower cost, and it's green because we're reusing something rather than having it go into the waste stream. So we've had pretty good success with that.
Yeah, they're a great company. When we did my office, that's where I got the furniture from, and it's beautiful. You can't even tell that it was previously used.
So that don't make sense. I just, but I got to ask, I mean, computers, full IT setup is less than $1,000 bucks. And a desk is, I mean, so 10K for a person seems like a lot of money.
Yeah, so I can maybe help add on. If you look at the service improvement request form, so again, with the social workers, we, again, are trying to just sort of anticipate that we might get LCSW, so licensed clinical social workers. We may get MSW level, but in the event that we do get licensed clinical social workers, who are the successful candidates, there are various costs attributed to each social worker with maintaining their licensure, the training that they need, things of that nature. So unlike the IT specialists that wouldn't have those costs, actually quite a large chunk of that cost would be for those two positions and those ongoing licensure requirements.
And there's also a small amount in the line item for individual liability insurance. Currently, we're covered under the town, but with the nature and the serious responsibilities of these positions, we felt really strongly that there would need to be an additional liability insurance for those two positions as well as myself.
Just, this one's bothering me. I've asked this in advance. Can you explain the supervision costs for $14,000?
Yeah, I'll take a stab at it, and I know Maria will help me. Part of that is an increase for myself. With these two new positions, you're adding an increased scope of work. You're adding an increased span of control, significant additional responsibilities and liability. When I first came to this position, it was a traditional municipal social worker position, which I've been doing since 2007. Adding in, in particular, the police social worker and supervising that, you're asking us to go out and do safety assessments and risk assessments and assess for suicidality. So those are really significant responsibilities that are asking us to be done and for me to supervise those staff and make sure that everything is done appropriately and safely. And there's also funding in there for consultation. We do have onboard a very seasoned LCSW who's acted as a consultant for myself. She's the person that I had done half of my training with for my license. And I feel really strongly that that's important, at least for year one, when we are developing these new positions, so that we have someone that we can call that's seasoned for help if we need it. And did I miss anything?
You did a great job.
Okay, thanks.
Are we revisiting this conversation again?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can definitely, Saturday afternoon, within the context of the overall service improvement, you know, conversation.
But ask questions now.
Well, I mean, are we, first of all, are we, this is just, this has nothing to do with, don't take the inflection of my voice of whether I support them or not. I'm just asking questions about the process, really.
Sure.
So one is, are we hiring with the context of the conversation to the person that you may not have a job in four years? That's an interesting conversation to have. And two, as I see my friend Lisa out there, it's almost as if this position, which, you know, the forecasting for these two, excuse me, these positions, I would say that we may like to look at them. There might be value. Amy's probably going to start, her toes are curling. But, you know, we have to look, think about the four years from now, the COLA increases, the benefits, all that. So that number is a much larger number four years from now. And she'd obviously be looking at this like it's in the SIP because this either gets added on like in the sense it's a project that's now got to be funded because we're going to have to come up with however much money to start paying for these positions. So we might just start looking at, in that sense, what's the true long-term cost at some point as it relates to the budget that some VOS looks at.
Yes, we actually did calculate the four-and-a-half-year cost in terms of, and we were looking at these initially as interim positions. We felt that, you know, while interim, you know, four to four-and-a-half years is a pretty good chunk of time for somebody to make a commitment. And that we did cost out, we did include general wage increases in those estimates. And our estimate was a four-and-a-half-year cost for two positions, about $975,000 for those two positions, again, over a four-year period, and factoring in some of those increases year over year. And we provided--
We should almost look at them as, like on the SIP, as if it's a project that needs to be funded in an out year to a certain extent.
And that's what we're looking at as part of the ARPA funding, Chris.
So I have a question--
But only till 20, but it's not permanent as part of the--
Part of the conversation we're having on Saturdays, whether there's a hard end from our perception, and again, it matters who's here, or future board's going to look to work it in, your point.
I can guarantee that, I can guarantee the conversation from Kristin's position, she's going to, these positions are not going to be cut. Okay, so if you had that kind of, that's what she's going to say. She's going to say, this delivered exactly what it should. This community is so much better for this experience, we can't possibly take this away.
And that's my hope. That's my hope, is to deliver something to you.
Because Rick's going to come in here, he's not future, we're going to get one more, and, you know, so we just need-- It's real, that's all.
I want to give you something that you're going to be so proud of that you're going to say, you know, the community just lost this.
Hey, you know me, I'll pay for it.
I know, you will.
My point is, is that Lisa's going to say, no, she's going to say, how can you pay for it?
This is a concern that I have with using ARPA dollars towards anything that puts a future financial burden on the taxpayer. And a lot of what you even say in here is that a lot of the mental health issues that you're seeing in adults is due to economic, their own economic uncertainty. And so to put a future financial tax burden on them is concerning for me because we'll have to find that line, I don't know, at some point. My other question is, so that's why, to support it, I would like to see more data. You know, what, I haven't seen any data as to what actually has changed. And I know, oh, that's coming up, okay.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of slides.
I also have a question about, so it's my understanding that currently, through the town, a family is eligible for five free mental health-- town, a family is eligible for five free mental health sessions, correct, that can be spent by an outside provider, is that correct?
Correct.
So do you have information on what that has looked like over the last couple of years? Has that increased? And is there something we could expand with that to individuals, rather than hiring a social worker? Like, is there a way to expand that program?
So, yes.
These slides are gonna answer all your questions.
Before we do get to that, though, the supervision cost is something I've never seen before.
Yes.
In terms of adding positions and somebody getting a raise, and this is nothing to do with you, but I've, in my municipal budgeting experience, never seen a supervisor getting a raise for having additional direct reports. I appreciate the concept, but that one's, that's brand-new for me to ever see.
I, you know, again, I wanna make sure that we're being fair to our staff, and so we do look at things like span of control and responsibilities, and, you know, how much scope we're adding, how many direct reports we're adding. And again, while we don't have, again, a specific number of what that might look like, I think we've put together what I thought might be a pretty good estimate in terms of, again, not only like the direct supervision piece with Kristen, but potentially the contracted services as well for that LCSW.
No, and I hear that, I guess, but I guess where I would go with this is, it all sounds good in the context of this, right up until Tom Roy says, well, you hired four more custodians, so I need a 10% raise because I have two more direct reports now. And again, from, we do salaries for department heads on benchmarking on other communities, and we've never corrected for number of direct reports to it. I'm not against this, but I think we need to be very careful opening up this can of worms with respect to department heads, and how many direct reports, and, because is it two for public works, or is it one for assessor? Amy gets another person, so now, because then it's like, how are we benchmarking this, and how are we setting it? No, sorry, Amy, finances aren't that important, so you don't get another, you don't get a raise, but, all right, chief, you do, because there's two more officers, right? Like, how do we, how do we equalize that across the organization?
So we actually do look at scope and span of control, where it's relevant and appropriate. So for example, when we did the analysis related to Amy's position, we also took a look at things such as, you know, finance directors, are they responsible for overseeing assessment, like she is? Are they responsible for overseeing revenue? That adds, again, increased scope and span of control. So we look to those positions as more comparable in terms of her salary compensation. With Tom Roy, in the most recent adjustment, again, we looked to other public work directors that have engineering under their purview, because that is, again, a higher level of responsibility.
No, I hear you, but again, they might have double the number of cloud drivers underneath them, is my point. So if you start doing it on headcount, I think it's a slippery slope.
And this one, again, just beyond headcount, it's also on what we would call, you know, that scope and the larger span of control. So again, we do tend to look at that when we are looking at positions. It's not necessarily like just the bodies, but the span of work and level of responsibility that is under them.
Do we have, do we have the job, your current job description, is that something that we would be helpful to see, like, right now?
Yeah, I mean, I think I would wanna see that, and I would also wanna see what Kristen's not gonna be doing as a result of her increase, because I presume she's at 90, 95, 115% of capacity. So if we're gonna add more responsibility to her, she's passing something off to someone else.
Yeah, so basically, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I think part of it, too, in addition to the scope, is that we're gonna be creating two brand-new programs, and we're gonna be completely expanding our programs and services. We're almost gonna be doubling what we're offering on the social services side. And in terms of the job description, I think it would change quite a bit, because you're gonna be adding those supervisory responsibilities. And what we were looking to do was shift some of our community social workers' responsibilities to the new positions, and then that community social worker could potentially take some of my direct service, which would open my time up for the supervision.
And that's what I'm talking about.
Maybe it would be helpful if Kristen could finish presenting what the positions are, so that we understand the scope of the services.
Thank you.
Sorry, you put a new number in front of me, and I have lots of questions. All the data, all the data matters later, you can't understand what we're talking about.
I hear you, I just think it might be more productive to have that conversation after we've seen the presentation.
Agreed.
Thank you. Okay. So some of the drivers for why we're recommending these new programs and services, there's been significant changes in our juvenile review board cases, which we were just talking about briefly on our way in. Pre-pandemic, the cases were primarily involved vaping and non, and they did not involve aggression or violence. Since the pandemic, we've seen a significant shift in our cases, which I'm gonna get into. The past four cases that we've seen have involved aggression, physical violence, victimization, and destruction of property. That's not something that we typically see here in Simsbury. Since I started, there's been one case that involved a victim, and you can see the shift. Our referrals to the youth therapy program has, have also risen. In FY '20, we had seven referrals, and in FY '21, we jumped all the way up to six. We've seen a significant increase in number of the elementary school children being referred. In FY '21, half of the referrals were under the age of 12, and this included a four-year-old and a five-year-old. So we're seeing behaviors, we're seeing mental health concerns at earlier ages, and it's impacting all areas of these children's lives. And the schools are also seeing significant increases in behaviors, which is on another slide. And in, to date, in FY '22, we've had seven referrals, and four of those have been under the age of 12. Prior to the pandemic, we were able to connect our referrals to a provider typically within five days. Prior to the pandemic, I never had an issue with finding a provider and connecting someone. And since the pandemic and to date, I have no providers to take my referrals. I had a new referral at my desk this past Tuesday, and I don't have anyone to send her to. She, I gave her a list of agencies that I'm not contracted with, and I've offered to help connect her to those agencies, but my program can't assist her, because there aren't enough providers, and there are too many referrals. And I have another person coming in next week, and I know it will be the same situation. Over the course of the pandemic, we worked hard to expand our service network. We onboarded four new local providers, and one of those is a, is an agency, so there's multiple providers in that agency. Families are waiting significantly longer to find a provider, and they've had to seek referrals from their insurance company rather than us. And this frustration just adds to the crisis that they're already in. You know, if you can imagine having a four-year-old, or a five-year-old, or even your 16-year-old that's having a significant amount of health issue, and you, as a parent, can't find someone to help them. It's very paralyzing, and it's very difficult for the family.
So that does sound awful. Help me understand how that translates to two social workers, because right now, we can't do anything for them. So additional staff is gonna help them, or we still can't do anything for them?
So I have some slides on that.
Okay.
Wait for it.
It's a complex issue, I'm trying to compartmentalize.
Well, not everyone gets referred out. I mean, there's a lot of diffusion and a lot of immediate, oh, you.
The school social workers are reporting an increase in anxiety, depression, school avoidance, and poor social skills over the course of the pandemic. Parents are seeking support in regards to increased mental health concerns and challenging behaviors at home. The community has also recognized publicly, even at your meetings, that there has been an increase in adverse behaviors on the playgrounds and in our open space areas within town, and children are lacking structure and supervision. One of our goals for the new social worker would be to offer programs and activities directly during those times, to provide structure when the kids are not in school. This is, you know, where we would base our job description, should we be so lucky to get that far. The youth and family social worker would perform outreach and programming services to youth and families, provide programs focused on positive youth development, pro-social engagements, community activities, and parenting and education opportunities. We will provide case management services to our youth, our JRB clients, and our YSB participants and their families. And we would also look to provide more traditional Youth Service Bureau activities, not currently offered by the town. Many towns have what I would just call a truce, Youth Service Bureau, where they have a department that's dedicated just to youth services. And we just have myself and our community social worker who try to make it happen as best as we can. So with an additional social worker, we'll get a little bit closer to be able to provide more of those services, like I said, programming and in-person supports. And what we're seeing is that there's a new global trend, this is in relation to the police social worker, there's a new global trend to add social workers to police departments, matching clinical social workers and their skills with police partners to respond to calls related to mental health and family issues. The closure of several state institutions in the 90s had led to more people with mental health issues lacking services and calls for service when in a crisis. A quote from the Connecticut Mirror is that "It's not reasonable to expect cops to be social workers and the people who direct traffic." And that "police involvement in mental health care makes people worse, not better." There's a very successful co-responder program that's been developed in Denver, in which trained clinicians ride along with police officers to offer varied assistance to disrupt persons and keep many of them from being inappropriately corralled into the criminal justice system. I had a conversation with the chief this afternoon, and we would have a lot of kinks to work through as to how this would work for our community. It's not as likely that the social worker would ride along on calls. It probably will be more framed that that social worker will have the responsibility to follow up on all of the 911 calls related to family and individuals under the age of 65. And that's something that we're not able to do now. We don't have the time to provide that service. And I think it's definitely needed, especially around the issues of family violence and mental health calls.
So, I don't know, I don't know how to ask this any other way, though. How does that work with safety for staff? Because you're gonna send someone out the next day who doesn't have a sidearm?
So what they, from what I've read so far, and what I read in the article about the Colorado program, is that once the officer has determined that this situation is safe and that the social worker can go out. If it was a situation where there was a, say that there was a gun in the home, certainly I wouldn't wanna send my social worker back out without a police officer. And then if that were the case, we would probably ask our community officer, Jamie Ball, to go out with the social worker.
So there'll have to be some pretty substantial policies and procedures and communication and stuff that goes with the police commission and police department on this, okay?
And that's why it's gonna be a real heavy lift, especially for me, to design this program and make sure that everybody's safe on a daily basis.
I don't know when I can, when I can ask a question about this, but I guess the simple question is, why isn't this social worker part of the police department? Because at the CCM convention, they presented, I think it was Enfield, that they had a community social worker embedded in their PD.
Mm-hmm. I don't know, I can just tell you what my ideas were, and then Maria can maybe jump in. There's not probably enough to fill the day of the social worker, just with the police department?
I hope that we're not compared to Enfield.
Correct, correct. So part of what the, the...
I mean, let's be real, from a population standpoint, I know what you mean.
So part of what the police social worker would also do is to work in conjunction with me around the JRB. So currently, our juvenile review board, we have a hearing once a month, so if we have kiddos that have gotten on the wrong side of the law, they come and sit before us. And then it pretty much ends there. There's no supports, there's no follow-through. There are things that we are supposed to be doing, that we kind of, we're doing our best to keep up. But an example is, there's something called the Ohio Scales, which tests the severity of your behaviors and your thought patterns, and also tests what the parents see in their child. We're simply giving them to them and asking them to return them to us. But in an ideal world, the social worker would be sitting down with the family and with the child and conducting the Ohio Scales, and then through the JRB process, walking through with that child and their family, making sure that the community service is completed, and then sitting down with them after it's been completed, redoing the Ohio Scales and assessing what difference you've made in that child's life. We can't, we can't do that right now. So it would be really good and really important to be able to do that. And again, like I said, we've never seen the violence that we've seen in these kiddos right now. It's surprising to me.
Before I move on from this, I'm just, I'm really intrigued by this, and I think that it also is gonna be interesting, assuming we move forward with a police staffing study, to what extent that this kind of position could take some work off of police that's not appropriate for police to be doing. At the same time, just for consideration, and I really don't know what the right thing to do is, but I could envision that there's certain advantages to have them more, if not reporting into the police department, sort of part of the life downstairs, as they, you know, build relationships with more people down there. And I just think when you report into an area, it just gives you a different mindset. And I don't know what the right thing for us to do is, but I just would ask that you consider it.
Like a dotted line, is that what you're thinking, to the PD, to social worker?
I can only give you a bad analogy that doesn't compare for my own career, but I know that when I changed managers and reported into a different function, it really changed my mindset and the relationships I was able to build.
And I think, you know, it will be a really tight collaboration between the PD and my department, and with the chief and myself. And I can just share with you that we already have a really great relationship. We work very closely with community officer Jamie Ball, because we do respond to 911 calls for all of our seniors above age 65. And Jamie also helps us out with anybody under 65 if we need that police support. So I'm not at all concerned about us being able to work well together and to share, certainly I'll be responsible for this social worker, but for the chief to be able to work with that person as well.
Agreed.
Did I miss anything?
No, I think that's a good description, and again, it is something we've discussed with the chief, and when we talked about structure, at least to start, we thought it made sense in terms of reporting structure for this person to report under Kristen.
So, the community police social worker performs outreach services to residents, youth families, and adults under 64. Follow-up to police calls for services related to family violence, substance abuse, mental health crises, medical emergencies, and other matters of well-being. Provide additional case management and support to our JRB referrals for both the youth and their family. And we would also, and this is, I think, speaking to what you were saying about taking some of the things off of the police officer's plates, is that we would like to be able to coordinate trainings for the police personnel in regard to these areas, and take that off of their plate.
Right.
So we'll all sing kumbaya together later. All right, just some more information for you to consider, because I like to give you statistics and quotes. Globally, there's a shortage of mental health providers. It's been exceedingly difficult to secure a provider for our referrals. While our department will not be directly providing clinical treatment, we will provide increased case management, skills groups for positive youth development, and parent education opportunities with our new social worker. What we are facing is a global issue, it's not just local. Parents are reporting overcrowding in local emergency rooms, psychiatric departments, waiting days for assessments and placements, and often discharged without adequate support services. And that's not just fluff. I have personal friends that have had kiddos in their emergency room for upwards of five to seven days, waiting for a bed. And they don't have a bed in the emergency room, they sit in a chair in the hall, and when it's bedtime, they roll out a bunch of cops. And that's nothing against the hospitals or the emergency rooms, it's just the way that it is right now, it's incredibly overcrowded. So if we can do something to prevent those mental health crises, we can potentially alleviate some of the burden on the hospital systems as well. The New York Times posted an article on December 15, 2021, entitled "A Mental Health Crisis Among the Young: There Is a Serious Mental Health Crisis for the Youth of America," according to Dr. Murthy, Surgeon General of the United States. And there is a mountain of evidence supporting this. And as schools across the country confront an array of urgent challenges, we're failing to address the most systemic, the most alarming, and the most dangerous crisis of all, a youth mental health emergency. And the lack of a significant national response is stunning. And I just also wanted to point out, because it was asked of me, that there is a significant difference between school social workers and your municipal social worker. School social workers are meant to focus on school issues, they are not meant to focus on universal, global, or family issues. Their main drivers are, you know, doing assessments and implementing IEPs and providing counseling while the student is in school. That's why the social workers all have me on speed dial, and they send the families to me for other issues. So I think that it is fair to say that we both need the additional assistance, we both need the additional social workers, and it can only benefit our community, especially with post-pandemic and recovery.
That was a question I was gonna ask, because I ask, I know the school's asking for two, they're gonna have one at each school, they already have a social worker, I believe, at the junior high and the high school. And the way that Matt Curtis described the social workers was very similar to the way that you're describing the home social worker, that they're not just related to school work, that they go to outreach to the homes for the children. And so one of my questions has been, do we need a social worker dedicated to youth and families and children in the town when we have seven across the school district? That was one question. The other part was, I also asked if there's capacity of any of the social workers, if it's, I mean, if this is a... it's, I mean, if this is a full-time need, that's something we would need, I probably, I mean, I see the numbers up there, but like, how many calls are we getting a day that we're not answering? That there's potential for capacity at one of the schools, you know, if they get, if we approve their schools. So, that's just, you know, maybe, you know, I'm not trying to be, you know, what's the word, sympathetic. I'm looking at it financially and just seeing that we're going to be getting two new social workers for the schools that we don't have, is there any room for capacity? And you're kind of saying there isn't, but it still seems like something we should explore. The other question that I have, and we can do, we can talk this on Saturday, is the four-year span, because, you know, is it a two-year look, and then we realize that it's going to keep going? I mean, the school says that they're going to be able to absorb the costs, right? And I think there was a proposal the other night to actually include it in the operating budget, because those are going away, because they have numbers, they show all the numbers. So, is it a two-year look, and then we look in two years at the next two years to see if we need it? And that's a question I have for Amy on ARPA. This is, and you don't have to listen tonight, but I'll say it anyway, is if we, this is going out to 2026, right? So, we're saying four years. We have to account for the money by 20, end of 2024. So, whatever we dedicate money to by the end of 2024, we have to use it for, correct? That's the way I read it.
So, yeah, we have to commit to it, and then it has to be expended by the end of 2026.
Right. So, if we commit the money to this through 2026, and at the end of 2024, we find that we really don't need the social workers, that money is committed, whether we need it or not?
I mean, that's a good question. I don't know if we could change the purpose or not. Likely not, because I think they want to see the plan, they're just giving you extra time to spend the money.
So, that's my concern with a lot of the ARPA spending that goes out. How do we make that fit?
There's a way to approve it, though, in that, and we even heard today that potentially our second tranche of money might be in jeopardy at the federal level, so we might not even get the extra money. But if, yeah.
Did you see that?
Yeah. Classic Fed bait and switch. Well, it's all this free money, just kidding. Anyway, is, you can approve two years with the, under the current tranche of money, and then you can come back, to your point, and review and approve another two years in '24. We still hit all the deadlines.
Yeah.
We haven't committed ourselves for four years necessarily.
Yeah, that's what I think.
I guess, so, you know, basically, and you were honest in saying, you're hoping that this actually, like, to me, the way you're structuring it and the policy and everything, to me, sounds like you're looking to change the whole structure of your department for the long term. And so, I guess, my question is, how does that plan to be funded? Or where do we see that, I guess, in just, I mean, increasing the budget in time? Because I think that it just seems that if these positions are approved and this whole department is restructured, this is the new social services department going forward. I just, I'm not seeing that it's going to be two years or four years and it's over. So, you know, I'm just trying to look at the long-term burden on the taxpayer, and it's with hiring for any position. You know, the police force is always asking for position, public works is, they're short-stepped and, and so, I guess-
That's what, I mean, that's how I started the conversation.
Yeah.
And I think you just illuminated something even more striking, Heather, is that if you redesign, do not take the inflection of my voice, okay? But if you redesign your department, and it becomes so intertwined of your new department, unwinding it to return it, let's say, to how we currently provide services today would be near impossible, which would be almost, so, it is something-
I guess that would mean that there was a need for those services, which, which I realize there's needs, there's needs to be evaluated everywhere, but-
Not necessarily in the sense that would happen if you get, so we bring two people in, and all of a sudden, we, it's, they're meeting, Kristen designs it now to meet what she has currently, what she's, what she's underserving currently, and what she's projecting to be serving in the future, potentially.
Well, I mean, it's, it's an increase, I think, in a level of service that we're not currently providing. And so, the policy issue is whether or not we think we should provide that level of service. I mean, we don't have a youth services board, we're not following up on things that we could follow up on if we had, you know, a social worker, and it's just-
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not debating the policy part, I'm saying just that, what Heather was saying is actually very illuminating, is that if it's a restructuring, you are almost guaranteeing that we will, it'll be, we won't be able to unwind for four years from now when the money's not there.
The question is whether we do this in the operating budget, because it's never going back, and we find other things to use the ARPA money for, because to me, ARPA is temporary.
Right.
And it doesn't, if we're going to have this conversation and do it, then we should put it in the operating budget and tell the taxpayers, we're restructuring the department, this is how we're doing it. We can offset elsewhere with ARPA money, and that feels more-
Genuine.
-long-term in terms of our funding schemes for this.
Right. I mean, I do think that there's a re, I mean, ARPA specifically calls out these types of pandemic responses. I mean, I think, you know, this is, but I mean, I think that it is a, it is a response to problems that are directly being caused by the pandemic. So, I, I mean, I think that's, you know, if-
But the money goes away.
And GFOA does, they suggest that you do not use your ARPA funding for recurring costs.
Well, in the guidance that Wendy gave us today, it also said that we need to be using ARPA money to address some of these issues that are direct results of the pandemic. And I think the mental health issues, I mean, this is just my opinion, you know, I think that it's, it's worse, the number of cases are higher, there's not enough mental health providers, we know that. And even though the social workers are not providing mental health care, they are providing an extra safety net. We've seen things here in town that are red flags, that we've had some, some increased, you know, mental health issues and domestic violence issues and gun violence issues, and, you know, it's an opportunity to look at it. And if we want to do it through the operating budget, I think we can. But I think there is a reason why we're getting ARPA money to address this, because it is a problem with the pandemic.
You're making, you're making great points, I agree. I don't, so, everything, everything Amber said is 100% correct, but I think is, this board has two jobs, two, I think, excuse me, this is my impression of what this board should have, and that is to meet the needs of, to have, to be a very real conversation about needing, meeting the needs of our citizenry. And if we can elevate the services that we provide to be better than any other town, I'm all for that. It's not, it is, it's not up for debate that, that there is an increased need, in my mind. But this board also has a responsibility to have a real conversation about how we should be, we should be weaving in the costs of this in the mindset that they're going to be a long-term, permanent cost. We shouldn't be thinking about, and that's what I just want to be having now, because I guarantee it, a friend, Lisa, whose job is to, her oversight job is to say, hey, you guys signed up for it. I'm not here to tell you can't or can't have, but you signed up for it, how are you going to pay for it? And if we're going to pay for it for real costs, that real cost comes from, the taxpayers bear that increased cost coming down the road.
So, the good news, we'll have all Saturday to debate which line item we're going to pay for it from. But for Saturday to get ready, though, is there more slides on the data in terms of the number of calls your office is getting, the number of mental health cases? Because again, I love the quotes, but I need to see the data for town. The number of domestic violence calls, the number of family violence calls, all those numbers are going to help me understand how we're funding this.
Yeah. If I could just add a few points that I think would probably be helpful for the conversation, and I'd kind of like to go back to summary Amber's remarks. And again, this is more, I would say, anecdotal in nature, but even my office is seeing calls, emails, folks are really struggling, and I think, right, the ARPA funding in part was intended for one of the reasons, right, was its pandemic recovery and helping attack all some of the mental health crisis that we're seeing. And just candidly, you know, so many folks have lost the ability to just cope with small challenges. And, you know, that results and manifests in ways that even my office is seeing, where perhaps, you know, prior to the pandemic, maybe a handful times a year, you would have a resident call with something that's sort of like an odd request, or you would see, you'd see that person struggling. Sometimes now, it's, it's every week, it's every day, and people are so overwhelmed by the smallest obstacles, internet service, they didn't like the customer service they received from Frontier, or, you know, those very, very small obstacles are very overwhelming problems, to the point that they're reaching out and contacting my office for help and just trying to resolve them. We've just seen folks' ability to get to cope with just daily life situations, it's just gone. And it's even increasing, I would say, you know, Melissa can speak to this as well, I mean, so much of our office's time now is trying to help these folks in addition to, you know, social services and other departments. And so, just sort of in terms of people who are sort of boots on the ground, you know, we're just really seeing that need right now. So, again, this is just an area that I've become passionate about, as I'm seeing our residents just really struggling and knowing that the ARPA funds can be used to try to help folks, and we're just, again, seeing this crisis and that people just don't have the ability to have access to providers, there aren't enough providers. And if we can do some of the preventive work, I just, again, something I think would be an appropriate use of ARPA dollars should be considered.
Maria, I agree with you, but let me jump in, though. Is folks pissed off about Frontier are not going to get referred to these new social workers? And I agree with you, but now we're talking about funding customer service in your office, which is different. I hear what you're saying, and I'm not debating that there is a mental health crisis, but that doesn't make the case for me that that person is going to ever make it to Kristen's office, right? Because you're not going to refer them over there because they're mad at you about Frontier. And I'm using, I get what you're saying, and I've heard those calls, I've seen those emails, I agree with you. But I'm struggling with how do we put this picture together to get the staff to the people? And that's why I'm asking for the numbers in terms of police department intervention and social services intervention. And I respect where you're coming from, but I'm not sure those people are ever going to get referred over to Kristen's office.
I don't think I have any additional data from social services perspective, aside from like the JRB and the YSB, that, and the youth therapy, other than like food bank, if you wanted like energy assistance and things like that, we keep that. We're improving our tracking. As you remember, last year, we added money for a charity tracker, so we've been using that. So, hopefully, moving forward, we'll be able to provide deeper levels of data. There is some data from the chief that maybe we could provide for Saturday, but I'm not sure what else.
Because again, what I'm trying to do here, too, guys, is, again, it's, and I want to be very careful with how I say this, but the mental health crisis is being talked about everywhere. And I want to make sure that as we're doing this, we're funding a solution, and I'm not accusing anybody of this, but are, and not confirming a bias, because it's in our face every day in the newspaper and everywhere else, and it never has been. And mental health is certainly an issue. I struggle with mental health issues personally, so I'm not taking this lightly. But I want to make sure that it's two of the right numbers, and not four. Where are they going? And again, data often drives those decisions, and I appreciate and I hear the stories, but I want to make sure that we're structuring a plan that, and I mean this respectfully, isn't hoping to solve the problem. We're putting the resources in the breach where they're needed. So, do we need four in the schools? Do we need two in the police department? And again, that's where we make data-driven decisions, so.
Can I just add one more thing, too? Like, I, I agree with the increased costs and the needs and everything like that, and I may, I may be being hopeful, but, you know, we just got out of the pandemic. Well, okay, we are thinking-
We're emerging.
We're just coming out of it and coming up for air. Like, people, the kids in school are back to on mass, so it, maybe, you know, behaviors will revert back to pre-pandemic, better conditions, you know, in two years than forever. So, that gets to the, do you add it to the operating if it really is a two-year need? But then we get back to, we're restructuring the whole department. So, there's, there's a few things at play there. If it's a two-year need, and then we reevaluate, because things may get better, I don't know if they're going to get better. You know, we don't look at what's happening, you know, we may not be here in two years, I don't know. So, you know, that's the other flip side to that, too.
But I do think, you know, I, I mean, I agree to Amber's points, but I just do think that we have a fiduciary responsibility to our citizens as well, and, you know, how can we answer to a taxpayer who says, why did we hire all these new social workers? And just say, without real data of, because we saw increases at this numbers and these were, like, and these are the numbers? But it's kind of hard to answer to the general public with the reason is because of quotes and, as people say, you know, it's kind of a hard thing, so.
Well, you must, you, so you track data, so you track data, you told us, like, this is not, this is not, believe, this is not an inquisition here, okay? But I'm just trying to help the, let's move along. And you tracked data, you told us about how many families applied for, for the cheese days and that, so that, that is there. There's, I, Matt, I would hope that we have, you have software for your own purposes that allows you to track the amount of inbound calls, you make new cases, new inquiries for whatever the different ways you classify certain types of calls for service. And I think we saw at the tri-board meeting, you know, Matt was illuminating the fact that there isn't going to be an increase in the population and the student body, but there would be, and there would be a shift to the type of professional services that would need to be delivered to the challenges that they are seeing emerging. And I would imagine that the schools would be a good, to back up their request, they would have the data to say, yes, we are seeing, you know, I've got four kids, two of my kids are now on IEPs. I never expected that, but things, you know, I don't, so, but, so how many new, how many kids now are on IEPs versus two years ago? They can tell you that data. And then, I mean, so they track a whole bunch of stuff around behavioral, the amount of times that, what is the nurse's office saying, how much supply? All that's got to be there. I'm sure this could go to support. So, wherever that social service person gets added to, whether it's yours or the BOEs, whomever, there's got to be it there. And maybe it's, I mean, it may just need that we need to do-
Well, if you're not providing the service, you're not tracking that data.
Like, I, I'm kind of struggling to understand what else I could give you, other than-
For instance, the five, okay, so the service that's already offered to residents, you know, what have you seen in terms of needing to refer to that service? You know, what has been your increase in having to refer families to, you know, to the providers?
So, that's, I don't know if you want me to go back to the slides. Which one was that?
We can go back to that slide with that number.
Yeah, it was one of your earlier ones.
It'd be helpful to get the slides, too. I don't know.
They're online, they're online.
Oh, they're online. There you go. Thank you.
So, what I shared with you with the juvenile review board, we could, I could go back and get the exact numbers of how many cases were year per year. But what we're, what the picture that I was trying to paint is that the behaviors and the reasons that these kiddos are being arrested is much more serious than what it used to be. So, we've got kids that, we're not arresting them because they're vaping in the girls' bathroom, we're arresting them because they walked up to another kid and, you know, there was an assault.
Yeah, not debating that, but again, we're at seven year to date, we're going to be at what at the year end, and your staff currently can handle the volume, can't handle the volume, like, what does that translate to for numbers? Seven is one, it's a half a social worker, what does that mean?
So, we're able to handle the volume of the referrals, the issue is that we don't have anywhere to refer them to, and there's no additional supports that we can provide to them, so they-
But we can't fix the referral problem, right? So, then it's the-
Right. But what can we do otherwise to support them while they're waiting for assistance?
There we are, there's, okay, so, now it's back to the question I said before, and now it's coming. So, we're increased, so because there's no intervention services-
We're increasing them.
We're increasing our own local services, which can help cut down on the referral needs, is what you're saying.
Or could provide some additional social supports to the families.
That's the part of the story I'm trying to piece together in my head, and that's why I was asking the questions ahead of time, as we go through all this stuff.
Yeah, it's just not funneling a volume of calls to someone else.
Only because you're still, okay, so now there's more people answer the phone, they go nowhere, it's like, that doesn't help, right? But adding additional programs-
Right. Yeah, it is, it is some, some additional programming.
Before, and you need a referral, and to maybe prevent a referral, is that-
Right, right.
And that's the challenge with the use case, right? Because, yeah, we're trying to prevent referrals, so the kids that are damaging-
Right.
Again, and we know some of where they are, but there's nothing we can do about it, so you're providing the program, it gets them something to do. Again, the problem is if they don't do the program, well, then it didn't do, yeah, it's, so it's, there's, there's pluses and minuses to all of this in terms of how to make it work, but I understand the story a little bit more now.
Or following up with the, a police, I mean, the, the calls that are coming into the police that could use social worker follow-up would get additional services and more follow-up than what's happening now.
And as we learned in the police, Sean, no one knows better than you, you know, that the, the level of accountability that's been placed upon the police, police services in every town since, however, however, so we're, we're hiring a person to do, you know, do all the additional good, needed paperwork and each other, so if we're adding, I can only imagine the level of accountability that is involved with when you interact, when a person, when a case is opened, and the liability is created by that, the amount of administration that must go into what a file is created, followed up upon, and it's been stamped in triplicate, and it's got 87 different microfiche films, and all that kind of stuff now that we have now. So if you're loading, so if you put additional accountability onto an apartment, and then you're loading it with additional cases, that exponentially goes up, the amount of work that's being done. Who's doing the work? Bodies, you have to add bodies to it.
Well, I was going to just comment on the, the police one, I am definitely, I'm kind of in favor of that one, and I went to, at the domestic violence presentation, John did, he had Tracy Dunn from the police department there, he had Interval House there, and there was someone else there, and, and Tracy really made the point that they definitely could use the social worker to help the PD, especially for women, you know, domestic violence cases and things like that, they don't have that, and, and that would be a huge addition for, for, for them.
Yeah, that one, that one is pretty much a slam dunk for me, other than, there's a lot of policies, procedures, and structure that I think needs to get in place before that person gets hired. Because I do not, I do not accept that we are going to send an unarmed civilian out to a house that's not safe, right?
But I mean, I think that is a pretty common...
I don't want to hear pretty common, I want to hear the procedures, and I want to hear that it's safe.
I understand, but I don't, I think that is something that we can look to other communities that have social workers that work with the police departments.
And Kristen did highlight, when we went to takeaway, she said that is mostly after-action, it's after, so this is...
That all sounds good, I want to make sure that the chief signs off on everything, too, because again, the last thing we want is an unarmed civilian going into a hostage.
Right, I, I'm not going to pretend to be a police officer, that's...
Again, I just, and again, if that takes time, again, this is where studies all of a sudden appear from, I just want to make sure that we're, we're getting everything lined up before we, we put staff on the books, too.
I, I'll be pretty busy.
Yeah.
Kristen, can we just advance one more slide? I, I do just really want to circle back to, this one, or the... I'm sorry, forward again.
Which one are you looking for?
The one about the youth service bureau activities.
That's earlier.
Thank you. And again, if we, if we didn't explain this well enough, I, you know, I apologize, but again, I think, right, we're not going to be able to provide those clinical services, but while folks are waiting, again, many communities do have what they call a youth service bureau, and so, right, some of those activities, I think, is where we can add value to help folks while they're, they're waiting, and again, so it's things like those, you know, positive youth development, educational opportunities for parents, support groups, those are, right, some of the things that were not currently provided, that I think that we could, and we were hoping, again, we're seeing the need, it's hard to say we have data, because we're not providing that service right now, so we don't have data to say like, oh, well, we're going to help, you know, 10 families with positive youth development, when you're not providing the service, it's hard to say that we have data for that. I think what we can speak to is the data for the services we currently have, but again, what we currently provide to youth and families, it's very limited, because we don't have a YSB, here, a true YSB here in Simsbury.
No, I agree, I guess my point, though, is if you have three cases to YSB, or you have 12 cases, or whatever it is, is, how does that equate to a staffing load?
Yep, so, JRB and YSB are different activities, juvenile review board versus youth service bureau activities.
But what's the case load for YSB?
We don't have one.
We don't have one, we don't have one.
We, basically, what we do now, and what we've historically done, is, we receive funding from DCF, and we historically have provided those dollars to other people to provide services, or we, you know, will fund things at the library, or recently, we've been buying a lot of supplies and books and things of that nature for the social workers.
So that's all good, sorry, it's late, but, so how does one become a YSB client?
A YSB?
Yes.
Anybody can, I mean, so, for example, a program that we've offered three times this year, because it was very popular, is a home alone safety course for kids that are in the, you know, late elementary, middle school range, to how to appropriately and safely be home alone and be responsible for yourself. We paid someone to come and provide that, but how cool would it be if we had a social worker in place who could learn how to do that training, and we could do it ourselves? So that's an important skill, that's positive youth development. A program that we did a few years ago in conjunction with the Board of Education, we brought in Lynn Lyons, she's an amazing consultant, and we did a presentation on anxiety in our youth. That was the most well-attended program that we've ever had in the history of YSB, and that was a YSB program with, with the Board of Education.
So that would become standard practice?
Right, I really want to be able to do more things like that.
So that's what I need to see on a slide, is that, that, these, again, I love the quotes and everything else, but I'm not, I'm not comprehending what you're actually talking about providing here and what it means, and again, is it three people, or is it 500 people? I don't know, you got to quantify it for me somehow.
I'm not really sure how.
Yeah, again, it's...
It's a long meeting, I bet you, bet you, you could, you could, we could walk away from this meeting, you could circle, you know, your wagons tomorrow, and you could probably collectively come up with, I think, you know, we're talking about Saturday, and I bet you can probably help, help, help each other, help yourselves to...
Well, and I think Avon has a youth services board, so it would be interesting to see, like, some of the programming that they have.
What Sean just said, you, I think you just illuminated what you're, you don't know what to do, which is, if you could put on a piece of paper, five events that may have been done that were contracted or part-time or weren't full, you know, those would be, those would be rolled into, and examples of things that would be provided by that, that board. What are the programs, what are the activities, what are the, whichever.
So I'm going to propose, oh, did you want to say something?
Well, yeah, again, I, I had previously, you know, worked at a community that had a very longstanding YSB program, and it's not only just sort of those programming sort of opportunities, but again, it's, it's really long-term support, so whether it's things like, maybe we develop a homework, you know, group, you know, for students who are struggling, or almost like a, another one is like, almost like a big brother, you know, big sister, like a peer mentor type, type, you know, program, whether it's grandparents raising grandchildren, right, really looking at what our needs are here to developing program that's not just like a one-night presentation, but again, ongoing support for children and families, and those are some of the kinds of examples of the activities that a YSB social worker would typically provide, it's a lot of times after school hours, it's not during the school day, but again, it's sort of that, like, after-school time support. So again, those are, and just some examples of YSB-type activities, and those were some of the, the types of, you know, support system-type activities that Kristen and I were talking about, sort of envisioning, because again, it's, it's something we're not currently providing, that could help provide some support for, for folks who are struggling.
So I have a question, you know, speaking of regionalizing, is, have they ever, because this is probably a farming, well, this is a nationwide issue, but, you know, has the Farmington Valley as a whole thought of setting up a youth service bureau for a determined, predetermined amount of time to address the issues that you're saying, or, you know, over the next four years, since probably they are saying as well that this is just a temporary try fix, you know, till we can get things to a better place, and has that ever been considered?
I don't think so, I, I don't, and I don't want to say that I don't think that it would work, but I think it would be difficult, because you're, you're wanting to provide direct programs and direct services to kids, like Maria said, like, after school, so you want to have that available in your town, you don't want to try to get the kids from Simsbury who are hanging out at the band shell and vandalizing the playground equipment, you're not really going to get them over to Canton for a homework club. Like, to me, it's kind of something that needs to be close to home.
Right, no, I didn't know if it would rotate, kind of, like, you know what I mean, envisioning, like, sort of rotating, and, I mean, realistically, the kids who are vandalizing the, the downtown, are they going to be at this homework club?
But we have, one of our goals is to find a way to engage them.
If their parents are in over the damage, maybe they would, but...
But I mean, if they are vandalizing property in town, I mean, is it better to have a police officer addressing that, or have a social worker addressing that? I mean, that's the kind of question you're setting up, right? I mean, they're, I mean, if they're committing a crime in town, then who's going to respond to it? And, you know?
Yeah, no, I agree, I've just been trying to see, like, how, how you get...
We're talking through all the, through conversation, you get to, to it, to a solution.
So what I was, I was going to propose, unless we have any specific questions to Kristen, not about the social workers, maybe we adjourn, because we're going to talk about this on Saturday, probably, a lot, if everybody's okay with that.
Adjourning? I'm fine with adjourning, okay.
Are you going to, you going to make that motion?
Only if, only if, I don't want, only if other folks didn't have anything they want to talk about.
Oh, yeah, I think, or, or really, you're going till Saturday, we're going to talk about the same, and are you available on Saturday if we need?
I was going to ask Maria about that, I wasn't planning to be here, but...
Okay. It sounds like we're going to need to have more conversations, so Kristen and I will...
Anybody that has an item on that list should be there on Saturday, I would suggest.